Good evening and welcome to the December 6th meeting of the Glendale City Council, being called to order at 6:30, 6:00 PM. Let's start with roll call, please.
Council members Asatrian.
Here.
Divine.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Mayor Kasakian. Mayor Protem Brodmann.
Here. And before we go to the flag, so let me just mention to everybody or anybody who's wondering why the mayor's seat is empty, Mayor Kasakian took a bit of a spill yesterday, and I don't know how much he wants me to share, but I will say he's feeling a lot better today, but he got a little banged up, so he's not going to be with us at tonight's meeting. He's probably watching from home, so we wish him well.
The sidewalk is in terrible shape, though.
The sidewalk is in bad shape, but he's, he got banged up, but...
Oh, the sidewalk is in perfect condition.
It was, it was the rain, I guess. But anyway, we wish him speedy recovery, and we're going to miss him tonight.
I know you did there.
So, let us rise to salute the flag of the United States. Place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And please remain standing as Clerk Abadjin gives us the invocation.
Let us begin by recognizing that we are standing on the indigenous lands of the Gabrielino Tongva people. As we celebrate this season of light, let us remember all the earned and unearned blessings that we enjoy in our lives. The sun, the moon, the stars, the roof over our heads, our health, our community, and the people in our lives. Let us use our blessings to bring light, hope, and justice to others within our community and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you. May be seated. Okay. Madam Clerk, may we have your report, please?
Yes. The agenda for the December 6th, 2022, regular meeting of this Glendale City Council was posted on Wednesday, November 30th, 2022, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Okay, what's next?
Next is presentations and appointments, a agenda preview for the meetings of Tuesday, December 13, 2022, by Assistant City Manager John Takhtalian.
Mr. Takhtalian.
Good evening, everybody. Next week's afternoon meeting will be, will start with a joint meeting of the City Council and the Housing Authority. Community Development will provide a report requesting a note and file to fiscal year 2122 Low and Moderate Income Housing Asset Fund Annual Report. For the evening meeting, under consent, the Public Works Department will provide a report on plans and specifications for the Brandon Motorway Improvement Project, followed by another report from Library Arts and Culture regarding acceptance of grant funds for the Glendale Central Library's Critical Maintenance, Sustainability, and Youth Spaces renovation project. 4C would be a report from Community Services and Parks regarding award of a professional services agreement to Maroon Society to conduct a 2223 Senior Needs Assessment. And the final consent item that evening will be from Community Development regarding acceptance of 2022 Historic Preservation Fund Grant in the Amount of $4,000. Under action items, the Finance Department will provide the first two reports. The first will be the annual financial report for the city as of June 30th, 2022, and the second will be the financial status update for the first quarter. At 8C will be the Glendale Water and Power Regarding Grayson Repowering Project. And the final action item that evening will be from Community Development regarding resolution appropriation for $300,000 in Transportation Development Act funds. And we have one report, I believe, for next week, from the Public Works Department regarding their biannual update and accomplishments, and we may have a second one for the sewer CCTV that was, is going to be postponed from this week to next.
Okay. And thank you very much. Before we start, I just, let me say two things. First, I failed to mention that our city attorney is also not here, and Ms. Van Miden is, is going to hold down the fort, but he is also not feeling well. I think he came down with, I don't know.
An illness.
An illness. He came down with an illness, but he should be, he should be better soon. But anyway, we want to wish him well also, so I didn't want to leave him out. And I think we should mention that item 9B, is this the right time to mention that we're going to continue item 9B? How do we do that? When we get to it, do you read it, and then we say we're continuing it, or what's the right procedure?
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protem, for the benefit of folks that, who may be in the audience, so that they don't wait around, this is a good time to mention that it's going to be continued. But then, when the time comes, we'll read it in the record, and it will be continued to next week.
Okay, so I will just say for anybody who's waiting for this item, hearing 9B with regard to advertising signage, or advertising signage overlay zone, will be continued to next week, in part because we would like Councilmember Kasakian to be here for that. Okay, what's next, Madam Clerk?
Next are consent items, including minutes. The following are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Okay. Is, is there anybody interested in pulling an item?
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay. And do we have any, anybody, any public comments, or anybody that wants to pull from the public?
No public comments.
No public comments. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Council members Asatrian.
Yes.
Divine.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Mayor Kasakian. Mayor Protem Brodmann.
Yes, thank you. And what's next?
Next are city council and staff comments.
Okay, so this is for the three-minute comment portion. If you speak now, you're...
No, it's us.
Mayor, Mayor Protem.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's us. Okay, I'll get this someday. Anyway, council comments. Let me turn to you, Councilmember Divine first.
Thank you, thank you. Well, I have to say, our week was full of events. I'm only going to mention a few. We had our amazing city tree lighting, and I want to thank Parks, Community Services and Parks for a fabulous program, a beautiful tree. I said we're going to be rivaling Rockefeller Center one of these days. It's getting higher than I ever imagined. And I want to also give kudos to Stephen Meek, who was the emcee and did a fine job. We all attended the Montrose Christmas Parade. Congratulations to Cheryl and everybody that put that on. Actually, it was the biggest crowd I think we've ever seen, at least in my tenure here on council. The crowd was amazing, just amazing, and it was a beautiful parade. Also attended the Glendale Association of Realtors, and I want to congratulate my good friend Lisa Babari, who was named Citizen of the Year. We witnessed their installation of officers. I also attended, and this is my final, I was proud to participate in the Zonta, the Burbank Zonta chapter of their 16 Days of Activism Against Gender-Based Violence in their yearly march, and I've been going to this for a few years now, fighting for women and girls and those who have suffered violence. Women's rights are human rights. Women have a right to say no. And I want to thank Zonta for putting this on every year. It's always, it's always a great event because men attend. It's not just women who are there fighting for women's rights. It is the men as well. And so I want to congratulate the Burbank Zonta and Gloria for the 16 Days of activism, and I think it's something that maybe our Commission on the Status of Women might consider getting, being part of. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilmember Divine. Councilmember Satrian?
Sure. I am, I'm going to go through two events, since there were so many, and then one upcoming one. The first one was the She Loves Collective. Some of my colleagues and I attended the private tour of the installation. This was an event, actually, that was inspired by a community member. He's sitting here, Malcolm Johnson. I actually want to thank you, I think we all do, for bringing forth an idea of us creating a space for healing for the Armenian-American community who have lost loved ones. And I'd want to thank our library and arts staff who took on that request that came from oral communication and collaborated with local artists to create this wonderful space. The installation is going to run through January 29, and it's at 250 North Orange Street in, obviously, Glendale. You can go Wednesday through Friday, 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Saturdays and Sundays, 12:00 PM through 9:00 PM. I have to say, I think it was one of the most moving installations or exhibits I've ever attended, not just emotionally, but physically. There are different rooms. One room makes you feel like you're in a bunker, and coming out of that, you are tense, and you feel like you were part of the war zone. And then the last room is actually called the Healing Room. Clerk Abadjin and I actually stood in that room, and I think we both just broke down in that room because the, I think the tenseness that we felt, both walking in and seeing all those names of the, both the soldiers and the civilians who lost their lives, and then feeling that bunker room, just, the Healing Room was the perfect ending to that. So I wanted to thank everybody that made that possible, and I encourage you to attend. We also had the Armenian Trade Show. We had roughly 50 businesses that visited and are here from Armenia. There was about 1,000 people that attended the trade show over the weekend. That was at our Civic Plaza. And then, this coming Friday, the California Armenian Legislative Caucus Foundation is hosting an SBA Programs and Services. It'll run from 1:00 PM to 3:00 PM at the Glendale Central Library. I encourage all of our small business owners to attend, to learn about SBA programs and resources, economic aid programs, accessing grants and loans, and of course, disaster loans. If you have further questions, you can contact them at 916-396-9738. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Najarian?
Not much else to say about the events. I'd like to request some information, though, before next, I think it's next week, we're discussing Grayson. Is it next week or in two weeks?
Mayor Protem Brodmann, Mayor City Council, Councilmember Najarian. The only council meeting left in the year is on the 13th. That's be the last council meeting of the year, so it will...
Okay. I'd like some information on the scatter good, LADWP Scattergood Energy Plant. I'm reading articles on it. I'm not quite sure what it is, but I think it's pertinent to put our decisions in context for next week, or whenever we discuss Grayson. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, let's see. Yeah, there were a lot of events, and I also attended the She Loves Collective exhibition called Shelter, and I won't repeat the experience as described by Councilmember Asatrian, although I shared that same kind of very physical, visceral kind of reaction to it. But I thought, another thing that was really exciting about it was just the way, you know, you had a member of the public come to council, Malcolm Johnson, right over there, came up and spoke in community event announcements, had an idea, actually presented it as something very simple, said we could just put up Post-it notes with all the names of the people that had fallen in the, in the Arts War. And low and behold, our Glendale Library Arts and Culture Group jumped on it and worked with She Loves Collective. And in the span of less than two months, I think maybe just over a month, they put this very impressive and very complicated show together. So it was just great to see, you know, how we go from one end, from a, an interesting idea brought to us by the community, to something that we're really proud of. I thought that was exciting. So I wanted to thank, also, I wanted to thank Glendale Library Arts and Culture for making that happen. And obviously, the people in She Loves Collective, and one of the members is, is on our staff right here, Mari Monsurian. Mari Monsurian, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I forgot one thing to add. It's also a request for information. I think yesterday, the LA County Board of Supervisors directed the LA County Public Works to identify sensitive locations where flooding could occur due to climate change. None of those listed locations are in Glendale, and we know that in 1934, or whatever, we had that huge flood. I want to make sure that if they're putting out funding to improve the walls or the channels, that we be included in there, and that we not be overlooked, because we did have a devastating flood due to unusual climate situations. It was a, I mean, it was like a crazy rain. It was like a two or three-day straight rain. So if, if our Public Works Department can just be in touch and say, hey, if you're looking at flooded prone areas, we certainly were vulnerable back in the 30s. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, okay. There was another, I want to mention, one other event that was really fun was the electric vehicle test drive event on, when was that? On Saturday, was it? Okay, on Saturday. I went to it, and it was, it was pretty packed, and I got the data just now from GWP. There were 214 people that came to test out electric vehicles, and there were a total of 365 drives, because some people wanted to check out different vehicles. There were 13 different vehicles there, including this big Ford truck, that it's hard to imagine that you could build an electric vehicle that's of that, of that size. But there were all kinds. There were the Teslas, there were Bolts, there were Leafs, there was a lot of stuff that I didn't even know about. It was very, very informative. And I just wanted to ask that we look at, either next time we do this, or maybe before we do it next time, is to try to do something similar for electric bikes. They're really becoming popular. I think they're a game changer in mobility, and a lot of people are curious about them, but they're a little on the expensive side, so people may not just be ready to go out and get one, but if they ride one, I bet they're going to really, really like it. So if, if I could get a second from one of my colleagues, I would like to ask GWP to look at how they can schedule something like that, either over the next year, or combine it with the EV Car Drive event a year from now.
I'll support it, for sure.
Okay, thank you. And then, just lastly, the November 6 election count was finally completed, I think, yesterday, or the day before? Well, the day before would be Sunday, probably yesterday, I don't know. And I want to just congratulate Representative Adam Schiff. I don't think we had any doubt that he would be successful, but he was. Assembly Member Friedman, Assembly Member Carrillo, who now is responsible for the south of the 134, primarily that part of Glendale, and hope one day she'll come here and, and meet with us. And then our, right next door in Burbank, Nikki Perez, Tamila Takahashi, and Zizet Mullins, three women, new council members, are now seated on the, on the Burbank City Council. So now we have an entirely new council in Burbank from, you know, two years back, with three women. And so it's, I just want to say congratulations to them and look forward to seeing how we can collaborate. We have so many things in common, energy and water and, and, and mobility and housing and so many things that we can be working really closely with them on. So, that's it for me. Any staff comments? I think you have something, Mr. Galanian.
Yes, Mayor Protem Brodmann, Member of City Council, actually, a couple of announcements for two community meetings. As you know, this council directed staff the closure of Shoal Canyon Landfill by December of 2025. And the next step in that process is that the, our Community Services and Parks Department has scheduled a community meeting to get feedback from the community members as to the future of what's going to replace landfill once it's closed and capped for open space or recreational use. That meeting is scheduled for December 7, which is tomorrow, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, at Joel Bridges Clubhouse at Glen Oaks Park. The, the next community meeting in the same neighborhood, as you may recall, Fire Chief Ernst had announced it previously, the Glen Oaks Canyon Wildfire Awareness and Fire Plan. That is planned for December 14, next Wednesday, at Glen Oaks Elementary School from 6:00 to 8:00 PM as well. Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. So we will go, next is community event announcements, is that right?
Yes, and we have two speaker cards.
We have two speaker cards for community event announcements. Am I missing anything?
It's getting warm in here. We're trying to solve the problem, but bear with us, folks.
Okay, yes, we apologize. It was actually cold when we came in here this afternoon, and they adjusted it, and now we're all hot, so we'll figure it out. Okay, community events announcements, three minutes. Our first speaker is, I'm afraid, Malcolm Johnson. Are you going to give us another thing that we have to do? Another good idea. I shouldn't, I shouldn't be so negative.
I just wanted to thank the ladies at She Loves Collective, and I was going to show some photographs I took of the event. You really have to be there to experience what the space is like and the feelings that Councilmember Asatrian talked about, but I encourage everyone to go. I encourage non-Armenians to ask questions and learn about the war, learn how it affected the Armenian community here, and just remember that all those ribbons you see in these shots are lives that were taken and lost, one life per ribbon, defending the Republic of Armenia from annihilation by Azerbaijan. So, please go. It's open, like Councilmember Asatrian said, it's, and it's right in the parking structure of Orange, so you can park there for 90 minutes for free, drop it, drop in, take a look, and then that's it. But again, ladies of She Love, thank you. Glendale Library, Library and Arts, thank you. And of course, council, thank you.
Thank you, Malcolm.
Next is Herbert Milano.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Brodmann, Members of the City Council. My name is Herbert Milano. It is my understanding that the city is now considering a $3,500 bonus to each and every city employee, irrespective of longevity, irrespective of their total compensation. It is the result, I believe, of a COVID, the American Reserve Funds or Rescue Plan, and it is a distribution without any negotiated preconditions, if I understand it correctly. This came to me informally. I'm making a suggestion here today that the city council create a precondition so that that extra, for that extra compensation. And that is a precondition that was suggested by the Pension Review Committee, that the city move towards open negotiations of all labor negotiations with the city employees. I think that it is the just thing to do for this, for your objective of transparency, and to allow the public to become aware of the overall impact of these negotiations. Had we had that type of open input 20 years ago, we may have avoided the significant debt that we've had right now in the unfunded obligations to CalPERS. So that's my suggestion, that don't make it simply a gift to the employees, but make it as a precondition to have the open negotiation as a condition to be approved. I want to tell you that, as I look at this particular number that you're planning to give $3,500, that as of December 2, 3,958 city residents received a notice of impending, 48-hour notice of shut-off of their electricity or water. There seems to be a significant discrepancy between those residents who need and those who get these extra bonuses. And I think it behooves the city council to look at those things together. It is my hope that the city employees will take that $3,500 and give it back to the city to pay off the increasing CalPERS obligation, which is in the tens of millions of dollars more this year as a result of the recession and inflation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Milano. Okay, what is next?
Next are action items. Action item A, Glendale Water and Power Regarding Status Update on Their Request for Proposals for Local Clean Distributed Energy Resources Per Council Resolution Number 22-34. One, motion to note and file report. Two, motion directing staff.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Mayor Protem Brodmann, Mayor City Council. Back in March of this year, City Council adopted a resolution with a modified Alternative 7 of the EIR for the repowering of the Grayson Power Plan. And then the process also directed staff to seek local clean energy DERs, distributed energy resources of 50 megawatts. And since then, GWP issued an RFP, and in the process, we have hired EcoMotion consulting firm to help us with the process. And this evening, Mr. Ted Flanagan, the president of that company, will be making the presentation. Mr. Flanagan was intimately involved in the review of the RFP and DER and the results that he's going to share with you. Mr. Flanagan?
Thank you very much. Am I advancing with this over here?
Is, is your mic on?
Checking one, two. Is that better? Bring it closer? Is that, can everybody hear me now? Okay, very good. Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here and to report on this, on this item, which is to report on the selection committee and the evaluation of the RFP that went out earlier this year. The, the short, the executive summary is, in May 27 of 2002, GWP issued an RFP for up to 50 megawatts of local clean distributed energy resources. Proposals were due in September. We received 24 notices of intent to submit. Only two qualified proposals were received with a total potential capacity of 16.375 megawatts. Of this capacity, seven megawatts is incremental. 9.375 megawatts is an extension of an existing, an existing program. So the solicitation resulted in only seven megawatts of new capacity. You know the background. The city council modified the implementation of Alternative 7 for the repowering of Grayson, and instructed staff to identify cleaner alternatives. Staff prepared the RFP that I've mentioned. Important that it's reliable and dispatchable distributed energy resources to minimize or avoid the need for the wort cell engines. So the proposals were, went out in seven categories. I saw it a little bit like a fishing, fishing expedition. We wanted to see what we could get from all these different sectors and all these distributed energy resources. The term distributed energy resources refers to generation that's distributed through the community. It could be solar generation, it could be fuel cells, it could be microturbines. I'll be talking about vehicle-to-grid opportunities in the next presentation. So, we were looking for distributed energy resources from a number of different sources, and we required that each one of the proposers submit a proposal for at least five megawatts of guaranteed capacity. The city did a lot of outreach. Emails were sent out to 282 contacts, 170 companies, including all the companies that had submitted proposals in the last clean energy RFP in 2018. There's lots of posting. We collaborated with SCAPA, CMUA, APPA, the California Energy Storage Alliance. Several of them posted on their website, so the word was certainly out there. Excuse me. The word was certainly out there, that Glendale, once again, was coming to the plate here, looking for capacity. Again, we received 24 notices of intent to submit. A lot of these were solar companies, but there's a really, an interesting diversity of projects that were presented, from ice storage to battery systems, to providing grid services, distributed energy resources, management systems. Very interesting, creative set of companies that are out there that went through this process. There was a bidders conference. There were a number of amendments where we actually eased the, the requirements for the proposals, but at the end of the day, four proposals were received and, and evaluated by the team. My company, EcoMotion, was brought in in, in August to help out with the proposal evaluation and the process, and we've been meeting weekly EcoMotion team and the GWP staff to try to figure out what's best for the city. There were four pro, pro program, proposals, excuse me, that came in. Willdan, a company that we've worked with, that are working with... Willdan, a company that we've worked with, that are working with, presented a 7-megawatt proposal, three different options for energy storage, battery energy storage, dispatchable. Franklin, which is our current demand response provider. Their contract ends, I believe, in 2024, and this is an extension of their current program. Seapower is a big national company that proposed demand response with large commercial customers. And Intersponse is a demand response company that also was really interested in setting up a platform for managing distributed energy resources throughout our city. I was directed by Craig Keenan to call up all the nonrespondents. Why did they not respond when they had said that they were interested in submitting a bid? And I had very good conversations with 14 out of the 20 that didn't respond. And the most important thing that I can say to you is that all of these companies would like to work with Glendale in the future. If we can change the way we're, change the requirements for this particular or for future solicitations, they would all be very interested in working with us. Some of the issues identified was the 5-megawatt threshold. They thought that that was too large for many of them. There was a proposal bond that was considered onerous by several of the proposers. There were, of course, supply chain issues and this notion of guaranteeing prices out for the next two or three or four years where the supplies train disruptions that there are was considered very difficult. There were a lack of sites for solar. This was mentioned by several of the solar companies that proposed, that were interested in proposing. The exclusion of the municipal sites was cited. Of course, they were included in the prior Clean Energy RFP. There was a number of other things. There was a measurement conflict regarding ice storage systems. There was a lack of sites for EV charging facilities that Nuvee brought up, one of the leading EV charging companies out there, and vehicle-to-grid. One of the companies said they didn't like the requirement of hard copy proposals. There was a credit requirement. So there was a number of factors that we have, I think, well documented so that if we want to reissue a RFP in the future, we can do that. Of the four proposals that were received by the submittal deadline, two met all the proposal requirements. And they are Willdan, I mentioned, and Franklin. We decided, after conferring with the city attorney's office, we decided to grant additional time to the two other companies, Seapower and Intersponse. Both proposals looked really good to us, and we thought we would give them another week to fulfill the requirements, and they both declined to do so. So they were disqualified. We're working with Ascend Analytics to evaluate the two finalist proposals for their costs and benefits. Preliminary estimates suggest that the Willdan program will cost about $20 million, and Franklin at about $5.4 million. So given your approval to do so, the proposal evaluation team will fully vet and then interview the finalists, and then a recommendation will be made and presented by Mark Young to the city manager and to the city council. This is a slide that was put in by the city. These are your alternatives, I suppose, for action tonight. City council may choose to note and file this report, providing a status update on the DER RFP process. Number two, city council may choose to note and file this report as well as provide further direction to staff relating to same. Number three, city council consider any other alternative not proposed by staff.
Okay, thank you. If we could, let's first go to questions just to clarify anything that you saw in the report as opposed to comments. And then we'll go to the callers, then we'll come back for our comments. So does anybody have questions?
I have one question, and that concerns the proposed bonds. Bond hold, is that what they were called? Or the bonds, and they don't want to agree to those. What's the importance of that? And why do we insist on putting that in our RFPs?
Right, right. And we've had several.
If I may direct that question to our chief assistant, city attorney, Van Miden.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. And also, Mr. Flanagan can provide some additional information in response to this question as well. But these are standard provisions that protect the city. And so we have a performance bond and a bid bond. That is to ensure that the bidder doesn't change its mind or switch horses mid-course after the submission is made for the council's consideration. So that protects us in our negotiations. And then, performance bonds are bonds that we require that obligate them to undertake activities that they have agreed to do so under their contracts with us. And when they do not do so, then we have the ability to call those bonds and undertake the completion of the work. So those are two very important aspects of the bonding requirement. That is, and I think Mr. Galanian will concur, is very typical in our process for public works projects and infrastructure projects. They may seem onerous for proposers, but they are far from being unusual.
Why are they onerous to these proposers?
Well, in order to obtain a bond, you usually have to provide 10% of the value of the construction or the activity. And so in order to do so, they have to approach their financiers or financial institutions. Sometimes we have options that include letters of credit, which we have on occasion substituted, which have, in some rare instances, turned out to be more business-friendly. But typically, most organizations or proposers with financial wherewithal are aware of these requirements and are ready and willing and able to provide the documentation, the bond documentation that we require. I don't know if Mr. Galanian wanted to add anything to that.
Yeah, council member, there are typically two reasons why vendors refuse to get bonds. One, as Ms. Van Miden mentioned, is the cost. It does cost money to get it. And second, maturity outfits would require history and financial strength of the companies to issue these bonds to them. So if you haven't been in business for a reasonable amount of time, you don't have the experience, they'll be hard-pressed to issue a bond for you.
Thank you.
Let me, I'm going to follow up on that with Mr. Flanagan. So you spoke to Seapower, for example. Seapower is a big national firm. They've been around for a long time, I think. Maybe you can address that. But so I'm sure they wouldn't have had a financial problem. What was their rationale for not wanting to provide a bond?
Commissioner, I do not believe I spoke to Seapower. I did not speak to Seapower.
Oh, you did not speak to Seapower?
No, they were not on that list, no.
Okay, or Intersponse?
No, no.
Okay.
But there were several that said that they would be happy to get a bond if they were selected.
Right.
Right, it was just in this phase of, in the solicitation process that they, several of them said it was premature. Several of them said their chief financial officer said it was just a nonstarter.
Right.
So I think it's a different, I think these companies are a little bit different than the companies that are building power plants and doing major public works projects. As I said in some of the sessions yesterday, I think we're going to have to get these distributed energy resources in smaller chunks, likely from smaller companies as well.
And I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we required performance bond at this stage when we did our RFP in 2018, our Clean Energy RFP. I think we only required a performance bond once we selected. Maybe you could tell me, once we selected somebody or maybe once we got into contract discussions?
Members of the city council, Councilmember Protem Brodmann. I don't have all the background data on the 2018 RFP. Often, when the RFP will include a sample of the contract that we will enter into, and those requirements will be contained within that contract. So that's usually the point in time at which a potential proposer will make their objections concerning whether or not they will be enabled to provide the bond information.
Yeah, I think what we did here differently is we required the bond at the initial proposal stage, at the response to the RFP stage. And at that point, nobody, you know, has any idea whether they're going to even be selected. So they may think, why do I want to?
That's the bid, that would be the bid bond as opposed to a performance bubble bond.
Yeah, that's what we did. Councilmember Asatrian.
So you do this for other cities. Do other cities require this bond to come in at this early stage? What do you see?
I don't routinely do this for other cities, so I can't speak too authoritatively. I know that LA did require the same performance, the same bid bond. But a number of the companies that I spoke to, one fellow said, you know, I've looked at 40 RFPs in the past couple of years, and none of them were, none of them had this level of requirements. None of them had such onerous requirements, was the word.
Thank you.
Do you have any other questions? Councilmember Najarian?
No questions, just comments later.
Could you go back to the slide where you had the list of reasons why some of these interest parties didn't come forward? You said, it's just some of them I didn't understand. A lack of sites for EV charging. What does that mean?
You know, I think that was Nuvee that did say that. And they were proposing a vehicle-to-grid program for the city, or that's their business model. And they said that they would, they were unable, I think the RFP required respondents to be very specific about where they would cite, either solar systems or battery systems or storage or whatever. And they said it was impossible to secure the sites. No suitable site for vehicle-to-grid infrastructure could be nailed down in the solicitation period.
Okay. So it's not something that we're falling down on in terms of public charging or?
Well, this whole, several of the companies, not related to vehicle charging, but several of the solar companies said that the RFP was structured, that they had to identify all of the sites for 5 megawatts of solar capacity, you know, at the time of submitting their proposal. And they said without the municipal sites, obviously, that was much more difficult. And they also felt that, several companies said that, you know, if the city was committed to this, the city would introduce them to different, you know, customers and sort of help facilitate that process. So it was that getting to 5 megawatts by September 30th of this year, I guess.
Okay. And then I just wanted to ask, I don't know if this measurement conflict regarding ice storage, is that important? Is that significant or?
Well, I don't get it, because I think several of you know about Ice Bear Systems, right? Thermal energy storage systems that use ice. And, you know, Ice Bear was located in Glendale. And Glendale, the city of Glendale, has a contract with Ice Bear, and I think still has, a lot of these thermal energy storage systems. They claimed, the president of Tool Energy, which bought the Ice Bear technology, claimed that years ago, the California Energy Commission came up with a deemed savings calculation for the thermal energy storage systems. So it's a little complicated when you're dealing with thermal energy storage, especially with ice systems, to figure out what the savings are in kilowatt hours. But there was a, apparently, there was a methodology that had been approved by the CEC, and they said that wasn't going to be approved in this solicitation.
Okay. And then, lastly, this 5-megawatt threshold. I understand one of the issues was, we were saying it had to be 5 megawatts for each resource. So somebody that wanted to combine batteries and solar and maybe demand response and maybe energy efficiency, it had to be 5 megawatts for each of those things. Was that what you heard? Because that's kind of what I heard indirectly. Was that also what you heard about why this 5 megawatts was such an issue?
Yeah, Swell Energy, which is a great company doing really interesting work with, you know, going into homes and doing solar storage and energy efficiency. That's what they said. Their business model is to draw from a variety of resources to end up with, you know, energy savings and capacity reduction. So they said, we could have hit it if we've been able to, you know, given the authority to meld or bring together a variety of resources.
So they could have done 5 megawatts if it was all a bundle, but they couldn't do 5 of each specific category?
Yeah.
Okay. And I think Councilman Najarian?
Yeah, so was, I read the EIR, or the, not the EIR, but the RFP. And it appeared to me that this was a very broad and flexible program. I mean, the city did not dictate in any way, you've got to put it on residential roofs, you've got to have this much of battery storage. It was like, we need 5 megawatts? You guys are the industry, be creative, tell us how you can provide it. Am I correct in understanding that that's what the RFP was?
Well, I think the spirit of it was very much like that. I called it sort of a fishing expedition, in the kindest way. I mean, we're looking for resources. And with the RFP, there were seven categories. It even said, and submit anything else that you can think of that'll help us achieve our objectives. But then, when you drill down and you got into the stricter of the requirements, and you got into the bonding issue, and you get into the 5-megawatt issue, and, you know, and the requirements, you know, you can't have any price escalators and this and that. There was a number of factors that I think made it difficult.
So we didn't catch many fish, did we?
We didn't catch many fish. And I think the fish are, you know, the fish.
Fish weren't biting.
The fish weren't biting.
They wanted more on the hook.
They were going to more fertile waters, perhaps. Better feeding grounds, yeah.
Okay. Let's, I think we have, we have one card. Madam Clerk, how many people on the phone?
We have one caller.
One caller.
And one speaker card.
Okay, so we'll go to the speaker here in the chambers, and that will be Kate Unger, for three minutes.
Good evening, everybody. Mayor Protem and council and staff. And best wishes to Mayor Kasakian and to Mr. Garcia tonight. Sorry they couldn't be here. Excuse me, I'm a little froggy. I don't have a lot to say. I would just say, this is really frustrating because this DER RFP was supposed to really be an opportunity for us. And from the beginning, it was done in a way that wasn't going to get us there. It took too long to get started. It had a maximum of 50 megawatts. I mean, obviously, we didn't get there, but why limit it? And these issues that you've heard about, the previous 2018 RFP had a maximum, or sorry, a minimum of 0.5 megawatts, I believe. And as Mayor Protem Brodmann mentioned, it also didn't require upfront security for people who were just bidding in. Staff became aware of that through various channels, including people who were interested in bidding in. And rather than adjusting things in substantive ways, they stuck to it, and this failed. I mean, it could have gotten a lot more, and it failed. So I'm frustrated. I don't want to say a lot more than that at this point. That's negative, because I want to be positive. I will just say, it's a lesson. Let's learn from it. Let's do more. Let's go forward. Let's get our clean capacity. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protem, I have some updated information for you. I have confirmed that the 2018 RFP required a bid bond at the time, and the proposers were shortlisted. But many of them backed out of their commitments. So it was decided to require it again at the proposal stage. Again, this isn't unusual.
You're saying, in the 2018 RFP, we did not require a bond in the bidding stage?
We did. And at the time, a proposer was shortlisted, but a lot of them backed out of their commitments. So it was decided to require the bid bond at the proposal stage in order to keep the commitment of the proposal.
The bond was required when they were shortlisted?
Yes.
Not when they first submitted a proposal?
Yes, at the time, a proposer was shortlisted.
That's very different than this one.
Than for the entire proposal group, so the shortlisted group.
Just the shortlist. But this time, we did it for anybody, just to even make a proposal, they had to have a bond. We didn't do that last time.
No, we didn't. The understanding was at the time, it was shortlisted. Yes, and this is a confirmation from a former counsel for GWP.
Right, but I just want to be clear.
Yes.
We required some kind of a bond, a bid bond, when we shortlisted them?
Correct.
Not prior to that? Because we only shortlisted four firms out of 30-some that we received. So the 34, I think it was, that actually submitted did not have to provide a bond. It was only the four that we shortlisted that had to provide a bond. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, which is different from now, where we've required anybody to provide a bond just to submit a proposal.
That's correct. Yeah, and there are strategies that go with that on both sides. Yeah.
But didn't we go back? But didn't we go back, did I understand the process, that we went back to those two that weren't responsive, and we said, do you want in on this? Correct? And wasn't the bond issue one of the issues that, that was driving them out?
We don't know that, that that was what drove them out. But when we did give them the opportunity, gave them a week to resubmit with the bond.
So like hint, you're on our shortlist?
Pretty much, pretty big hint.
Okay, so.
Pretty big hint, yeah.
I mean, it's hard to say exactly, but it's not like, it's not, I think, the way it's being described here, that we had this onerous, this onerous obligation and condition that they didn't know they were going to be involved in a shortlist. We went to two of them, we said, hey, come on in. You want to play? By the way, you need a bond.
Right. But we only got four submissions out of 24 notices of intent. I think that, that's where we might have, we might have gotten more before we got, and those other two, we didn't specifically say, we're shortlisting you. We just wanted, we wanted a responsive proposal.
I mean, if the insinuation is that the city sabotaged this, I'm, I mean, let's not go down that road. I think the industry sabotaged it, that they weren't willing to step up to the plate. I mean, to say that the city sabotaged it, like another speaker mentioned, I have a problem with that.
Well, I don't, yeah, and I don't, I'm not saying anybody sabotaged consciously, and I don't think the speaker meant that. I think the reality, it was done in such a way that, you know, didn't get us the results we wanted. So, anyway, we have, sorry, we're getting, we have three callers. Okay, let's go to the callers.
Talk a little more, we'll get, we'll get some more interest.
Our first caller is Jackie Geish. Jackie, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Hi. My comment spans both items 8A and 8B. I am very disappointed in the meager responses to the local Clean Distributed Energy Resources RFP. I was glad that many of the nonrespondents were surveyed. Hopefully, City Council will give direction to GWP and legal to change the RFP and reissue it to get more respondents. It is critical that Glendale reduce greenhouse gases as well as air pollution, and increase its clean energy portfolio, and do so expeditiously. At the same time, I was very impressed with the thorough best practices analysis report done by EcoMotion. There are so many terrific ideas for multiple jurisdictions and organizations that Glendale could use.
Mayor Protem, the speaker needs to wait for the next item. Yes. Jackie, you should call in and make separate comments for the next item, because we want the comments specific to what's on the agenda right now.
They're related, so, yeah.
Yeah, but they're two different items. They're related, but they're two different agenda items. So if you could just wrap up your comments from this one, and then you're free to call back to talk about the next one.
Okay.
Thank you. Who else do we have?
Our next caller is Courtney Smith. Courtney, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Courtney Smith. I'm a Glendale resident. I'm calling to encourage Council to utilize all clean energy resources. This request or proposal is a valuable tool to help Glendale accomplish its green energy goals. And while it's been slow moving, I share frustrations just like Kate and Jackie. It does have the capacity to turn the tide for Glendale's carbon footprint. There are scientists and experts who can guide the city towards renewable and clean energy. Many of us are not scientists. I'm not a scientist. But I'm a concerned citizen who knows climate change is real, we are losing time, and we need to take all renewable options serious as we eliminate fossil fuels. Solar and renewable energy is possible, accessible, and right now, we have incentives to move away from fossil fuels effectively. So let's follow the lead of experts and continue to look at all the options through this RFP. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is, and final caller is Nat Jans. Nat, you're on air. You have three minutes. Oh, and actually, we just.
Hi there, thank you for taking my call.
Go ahead.
I would just like to talk about, it seems like we've got a little bit of a problem of agility going on right now, on two levels, right? Agility in the terms of our response to climate crisis and energy production, right? And you look at something as agile as a DER system with various options and various ways to distribute and respond to certain crises, or even just like a lack of sunlight, or a lack of wind, or something like that, right? We've got it all out there, and we have these ideas, we have these solutions, right? The other problem of agility is, we don't seem to be moving fast enough on implementing this sort of solution. And I'd like to say that I'm just a little bit disappointed in City Council's actions in that regard. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our final caller is Lynn Moses. Lynn, you're on air. You have three minutes.
Thank you very much. The previous callers are using some of the same language, disappointment at the council or at the RFP process. I would just like to, in contrast, a little disappointed too, I am. But I would just like to encourage the council, take another stab at it, get it done. The public and all of us, I believe, are extremely concerned about our, our climate. And if we're going to have a planet, or we're going to have a planet, it's just a matter of whether we're going to be around or not. We keep hearing cliches like that, but it's the stark reality. Send it back out as soon as possible, get whatever wasn't done fixed. I would just encourage the council to do that, and, you know, expeditiously. Because this is, again, on everybody's mind. Our energy resources are critical to whether, you know, our children are going to have a opportunity to live normal lives on this planet. In closing, I would like to say, I would like to compliment the council on the extreme professionalism that you all display. I mean, extremely professional. It's, it's very heartwarming and, and good to see. Everything isn't done right, I'm not saying that, but it's very professional. Like, LA City Council is a zoo. It really is. But thank you for your time. Goodbye.
Thank you.
Do we have any other callers?
No other callers.
But we have another card here on this item. This is on this item, right? And that is, I hope I get this right, Giuliano Prieto? Was that close?
Very close. Giuliano Prieto, good evening, everybody. I just wanted to mention just a couple of things. I'm a civil engineering contractor. I've been involved with RFP processes in the past. Don't take this the wrong way, but the entire system needs to be completely thrown out the door, and a very efficient, modern system needs to be brought in. There's really no reason that anyone can sit here with every consultant in the room for the gravity, or the entirety of an RFP process. You could take all of those people that are on that list that submitted everything, and you can literally just get rid of all the bureaucracy and say, give us proposals. Literally as simple as that. If you guys wanted to qualify something that somebody said, fine, put your money where your mouth is. Put a $5,000 deposit right to the city, treasurer holds it, and if your proposal's accepted, we'll put that towards your, your bid. If not, then there's a process to disqualify your money, or to be able to return your money if something doesn't happen. Very simple. Have the city manage the money. And this way, you have serious people. Now, the last thing that I'll tell you is that if Tesla was to come into this room on their first year, or first month, or had this amazing five-megawatt idea, the city of Glendale would not have accepted their proposal, because they would not have been able to bond for that proposal. No one would have provided a bond to them. And so with technology, you also have to have history. With rapid technology, there is no history. And so we're dealing with rapid technology here. And with rapid technology, we need to take those items into account. We need to take the company history of each one of those companies into account, and think for a minute and say, are we really adjusting for modern businesses that we want to acquire for their services to service our city? And I'm happy to talk to anybody that wants to talk afterwards. I have a lot of other ideas. I know I'm only limited to three minutes, but I appreciate everybody's time.
Thank you. Okay, so let's, let me, before, before I get comments from my colleagues, can, can we get a sense of, what is staff looking for on this item? What kind of direction do we need to provide?
Mayor Protem Brotman, member of City Council, essentially to note and file, we wanted to bring council up to speed as to the results of the RFP. And that will give staff the opportunity to go back and negotiate, and with the help of Mr. Flanagan, get into the weeds, so to speak, with these two proposers as to the details of their proposal, and bring it back to council, a recommendation to award contracts to them.
Okay, sounds good. So, and my colleagues have comments?
Can we?
Councilmember Asatria?
Can we also use this opportunity to talk about putting out an RFP, or is that, do we have to put that on a separate agenda item?
Councilmember Asatria, if directed by council, we can move forward and issue a new RFP with some modified language that we'll go back and check into and see how we can make this a more attractive and less strenuous on the proposers, if possible, within our legal requirements.
Yeah, can we do that legally? I mean, we put out an RFP, we have two responses.
Well, we can move forward with these proposers and go through the negotiation process, but go ahead and issue another RFP, a new, brand-new RFP.
We'll have two RFPs at the same.
No.
Look, this RFP is done, for the time being.
And you have two proposers.
We have two proposers.
They're done.
We enter into negotiations with them, and if what they propose is workable and doable, then we'll bring contracts back to council to award to them, and then issue a separate, separate RFP with separate requirements.
What if one of the two liked the first, liked the second RFP better than the one they're stuck with? I see some problems with that legally, but that's, I'm just a lawyer.
I have a question. I have a question.
Okay, Councilmember Devine.
After this RFP, can I ask staff, please, are you satisfied with Will Dan and Franklin moving forward? You know, we want to start getting this, this process, or the, this energy process going. And if we delay, delay, then, then that's, that's a problem. I think everybody wants us to move forward. We can do that, and then work on the next RFP and build in more flexibility, and change some of the, the issues in that RFP that are causing us issues. But for now, I think we should maybe consider moving forward.
And Mayor Protem, member of City Council, as you know, we have two items coming to council in the next two months, namely, the Grayson Repowering, as well as the Shoal Biogas Project. So once decisions are made for those two projects, we have an opportunity to go out with RFPs. And we also have, as you may recall, the 10% penetration, the solar penetration, that council has directed staff to, to move forward with. So there are a lot of initiatives out there, and this isn't the last opportunity. Like I said, I would recommend that we wait until perhaps February, so that council has made decisions on those two major projects, and we know where we stand, and we can more intelligently tailor the next RFP for whatever services we need.
So you're saying that we accept these two, go ahead and negotiate, but then make sure that we look at the process, the RFP process, the questions, the, all the information that we're asking, so that they don't seem so onerous on the applicants in February?
Again, we, Councilmember Devine, yes, I agree. But there were two proposers who obviously didn't see this as onerous, and they submitted their proposals. So it is doable. As you know, this is a hot industry, Mr. Flanagan would attest to that. There's a lot of competition with these kinds of services out there, and the vendors have the luxury of picking and choosing where they want to propose. But my recommendation would be to wait, and it's not that long of a wait, until, like I said, council has made decisions on Grayson, as well as the Biogas Project, and we'll reevaluate where we stand after that, as far as our, our energy needs are, and then we'll take it from there.
Okay, Councilmember Asatria.
So I want to clarify, at no point did I say that I want to delay this. I'm in full support of us moving forward. I simply asked whether or not we can put up, put out a new RFP, or give direction to staff to put out a new RFP. I don't want to delay this. I want us to move forward with it. If it means, you know, City Manager Longen, you noted about the upcoming projects. If we just give direction to staff today, so this item doesn't have to come back, it's under staff's discretion when that RFP comes back, correct?
As to the timing, Councilmember Asatria?
As to the timing and removing some of these barriers, and I know I used that word during the staff briefing, and I was corrected, but I still stand up by that word.
That's fine. Again, these are legal requirements that we have to work through, and we will reevaluate where we stand as far as the requirements in the RFP is concerned. You may provide direction to council and to staff, and again, that's, that's staff's intention. You have provided clear direction that this council is looking for additional clean energy resources, and we're on board with that. We have a number of things in the hopper. And like I said, the next step is going to be the 10% solar penetration. That's going to be a new RFP, as well as we have the city-owned facilities, that we have plans to install solar systems and storage at our own facilities. So there is a lot of things that are moving at the same time. And I'm not suggesting that, that you, you mentioned we should delay it. I'm just saying that we should wait for any new RFP, so that we have gotten direction, clear direction from council on those two projects, so we know how much, how much resources we have, and how much energy we can provide, and what the demand is, and then we can take it from there.
Okay, so, let's say I'm Will Dan. Let's say I'm Franklin. And they're watching the city council meeting, and they're hearing perhaps suggestions that barriers for them, for the industry, may be lowered. Or let's look at the other side, protections for the city may be lowered in another RFP. Am I going to continue negotiating with you? The answer would be no. I want to see, if the game is going to get easier, if it's going to, if we're going to shorten the playing field, I'm not going to negotiate with the city. I'm going to wait for the next thing to come down, where I may not have to have a bond, where I may not have to have five megawatts, et cetera, et cetera. So that's the problem I think we have, when you talk about sabotaging. I think this is sabotage. When we've got two, two people that went through this, let's call it a rigorous RFP, have come forward and have qualified, and then at the next meeting, the council's saying, you know what, we're going to do it again. It's going to be perhaps more profitable for, for them the next time around. So that's just a general comment that I think is sabotaging this, this program. You can, you can refer to that and answer that at any time. It's largely a rhetorical question. But I'm very disappointed in the industry. I think the industry, let's start with Sunrun. We had a one-on-one deal with Sunrun, and we sat and negotiated with them, and tried to make every concession that would make sense for the city in a DER. And it fell flat. Oh, there's tariffs on the Chinese panels. Oh, well, the deal is dead. But the next week, Biden rel lifted those tariffs from Vietnam, or whatever country they were being manufactured. So you're back in it, right, Sunrun? Oh, no, 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 we don't want that. We don't want that. So that was my first disappointment with the industry, and Sunrun was a leader in the industry. Then we said, okay, maybe that was just a one-off. Let's cast this wide net, to get as many different proposals, as many creative solutions to our problem. They knew what our problem was. They knew what we were looking for, for up to 50. And I don't think it would have made any difference if we said up to 100 or up to 200. You know, that was not the issue here. The issue was that they were not ready to commit to a deal that we were offering them. Perhaps their business model is consumer-based, go door-to-door, sign those people up, or have singular installations in faraway, sunlit fields, whether it's the desert or on mountain tops. But this city request wasn't anywhere near what they were looking for. It wasn't giving them the profit that they were looking for, and that's why they didn't respond. That's why we only got two. And one of them was already wedded to us. Franklin was already working with us. And they said, well, you know, we're doing the demand response, we can up it maybe seven more megawatts. So the problem here is not the city, it's not the RFP, the problem more megawatts. So, the problem here is not the city, it's not the RFP. The problem is the industry. The industry is not mature enough. They haven't developed enough. They haven't specialized their business plans enough to respond to what we are looking for for a city. We were looking for 50 megawatts from the beginning. We based our whole energy plan on 50 megawatts. We were deciding how many units in Grayson we wanted based on 50 megawatts. We were talking about the Shoal Canyon Biogas, based on 50 megawatts of this DER. It's a great idea. It's a great plan in theory, but when it comes time to reality, we're just not getting it. I don't want to, and we shouldn't be pointing the fingers at each other. We should be pointing the fingers at the industry because they're the ones that are failing us at this time.
Okay, thank you for that.
Are there any more comments?
I'm going to, I'm going to give my comments, and I'm going to respectfully disagree. I think it's us. It's not the industry. I think Sunrun is doing other virtual power plants in other places, and we'll see from Mr. Flanagan's report in a minute, a lot of these kinds of projects are happening at other utilities. So, I think partly it's that it's a different type of industry than we're used to, and we have to modify our approach because these are not the GEs and the Siemens of the world that are building big power plants. These are, in some cases, young companies, companies that do things very differently than we're used to. So, that's what I would say. And, and I do think, you know, and, and I don't think anybody sabotaged, I don't like that word because it sounds like it's a conscious effort to undermine a process. I don't think that's what's going on. I know GWP well enough to know that they would have loved to have more and better responses. So, it's not that at all, but it is, I think, a little bit of our stubbornness and our kind of doing things in a business-as-usual approach. And, and what's frustrating to me is that right after this RFP went out, Ms. Unger, who spoke and maybe is still here somewhere in the audience, not sure, oh, there she is, she wrote a, a, a letter to us, and she highlighted all these problems with the RFP, and she said, these things are going to cause the RFP to be unsuccessful. That went to the GWP team, and there was an opportunity to fix those things, and maybe some of them were, but the fundamental ones were not changed. And the outcome was exactly as Ms. Unger predicted. So, I think we need to learn from this lesson. We need to do better. Of course, I agree with my, with my colleagues. Let's, let's move ahead with anything that Willdan and Franklin have to offer. I think the Franklin one is, is just an extension of the current contract, and they're not doing, they're not meeting their numbers, I guess, on the current contract. So, I don't really understand the point of extending it, but I'll leave that to GWP. If it makes sense to extend it, that's fine. The Willdan one, Willdan is also already wedded to us. You know, they're doing our energy efficiency program. So, they already have that relationship with us, and that may be why they decided to move forward. I don't know. But this is a different project. I don't quite understand exactly what they want to do and how it's structured, but if, if staff thinks there's opportunity here, let's go pursue it. That's, that's what I would say. I would say there's really no reason to wait on the Grayson and Shoal decisions to go back out to the market. These things take so long, so let's prepare. I'm wondering, I mean, sometimes we get unsolicited proposals from people. What if, what if C-Power and Response just gave us an unsolicited proposal? Could we look at that even though it's not part of an RFP? That's, I guess, a question maybe for legal, maybe for the city manager, because if that's possible, I would like to try to see what it was that they were proposing us. If it's good enough and if we're really going to go at, you know, think we're going to move ahead with it, maybe at that point, they would not be so reluctant to put up a, a bid bond if we're going into negotiations. We should explore that. So, maybe, I don't know if you can answer the question about unsolicited proposals?
Mr. Mayor, Protem, Members of the City Council, I don't necessarily think that that is a legal question per se. I think that is more of a policy issue on whether or not, I mean, the city often does receive unsolicited proposals on any manner of topics, development and otherwise. So, I turn it over to the city manager for further response.
Mayor Protem Brodmann, Members of the City Council, naturally, if we get any unsolicited proposals on, on any project or programs or topic, we have the obligation to, to at least evaluate it, and we're open to that. But, but again, I emphasize the need to wait a couple of months so that we have a clear understanding of where our energy portfolio stands, and with that, it will give us a, a stronger standing as to what we are seeking. And even if we started a new, drafting a new RFP, it will take with the holidays and whatnot, it will take until February anyway. My recommendation would be if the direction is to issue another RFP, that we'll bring the draft of that RFP for council's approval before we issue it.
Okay, well, for my part, I would like to see us move ahead. I think whatever we do with Shoal and with Grayson, we need DERs because whatever we do, right, we still have a gap. We know that. And, and let's, let's get the ball rolling because it takes so long.
And, and, yeah, and, and to that point, we will go back and reevaluate what the requirements were in the RFP and if there are any adjustments that we may be able to do. But to, to council member Najarian's question, those, these two proposers, they've already submitted their proposal. They're known quantity. They've already submitted their bid bond, proposal bond. So, that's the only money that they've spent so far. And we will come back to, to council, like I said, in the next three months. There's going to be many other opportunities to tackle this issue.
Okay. And maybe if, if either of these, if anybody's out there listening, like C-Power or Ener响应, anybody else, will take an unsolicited proposal?
Well, I, I wouldn't invite unsolicited proposals, but like I said, if we receive it from, from any vendor, we'll, we'll evaluate them.
Okay, so, do we have any other comments, or does somebody want to make a motion?
This is a note and file, but with direction.
To proceed.
To proceed with these two and, and maybe if you want to make the motion, direction on moving forward with another RFP?
Sure. How about we leave that kind of open-ended for staff to put together one?
Okay.
Starting now, and then, you know, by the time that they get to that, it's going to be, you're going to have your Grayson and Shoal votes anyway. So, I'll, so I'll move that with that amendment.
The note and file and, and direction to proceed on these two projects, right?
Correct, yes.
And the second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Asatrian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Kasakian? And Mayor Protem Brodmann.
Yes, thank you. What's next?
Next is action item, action item B, Glendale Water and Power Regarding Review of Glendale Water and Power Department Public Benefit Charge Programs, Findings, and Recommendations. One motion to note and file report, two motion directing staff.
Mayor Protem, Members of the City Council, again, this, it's going, go back to you, Mr. Flanagan, for a presentation, essentially to follow council's direction and the goal of additional clean energy. We have secured services of ecomotion to essentially evaluate the existing programs that fall under the public benefit charge programs, including analyzing potential for additional energy efficiency, load management, as well as DER. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Flanagan.
Well, thank you very much. This is the project I, I'm excited to talk to you about. That's for sure. I was hired in August of this year to take a look at best practices and to look at what we might be doing with energy efficiency, with more energy efficiency, with more load management, with more distributed energy resources in, in the city, and to look far and wide at what's happening throughout California, not just at municipal utilities, but also at investor-owned utilities and community choice aggregators that are doing quite a bit. We looked across the country. We looked internationally at a number of best practices. We put together a lengthy report that I hope is very optimistic, that there's lots and lots of great ideas out there for, to help utilities like ours go through this transition from what I consider a sort of the old standard of power plant model, centralized power plant model, to the utility of the future, which is going to be very decarbonized, and it's going to be based largely on de, distributed energy resources that are throughout our community. So, we looked at best practices with energy efficiency, load management, DERs. We have a whole special chapter on vehicle-to-grid integration, or VGI as it's now being called. You know, if you have a, if you have 100 cars that are, that are linked up to the grid, that's a megawatt of power. So, you can start to do the numbers quickly and realize that as we have more and more EVs, more e-buses, more fleets of electric vehicles, that we can actually integrate those with our grid and address the peak demand. We look at cross-cutting programs, things like education, I'll get into them. We did a quick review of GWP's programs and services. There's a number of strategic considerations I want to just present quickly, and then a number of, seven recommendations that we came up with as a result of this. You might say, what's a best practice? And there's lots of different ways of defining best practices. We look at level of savings, of course, in energy and in capacity. Capacity is the primary issue that we have here. We look at participation rates. We look at penetration rates, the depth of savings per customer. And perhaps the most important thing with best practices is, are we creating behavioral change? You know, have we motivated segments, customer segments to take action, and will that stimulate long-term thinking and action? I'm a big believer, we have to couple technology with behavior. So, I'm just going to present, go through fairly quickly some of these best practices. And on, and the energy efficiency side, looking at residential programs, looking at education, household energy assessments, multifamily apartment programs, low-income programs. In the commercial, industrial, and mush sector, municipal utility, municipal university, schools, and hospitals is mush. All sorts of programs with assessments and coaching, new construction design services, direct install programs, a lot of electrification programs now that are coming on, on board. We, we featured, I think, about 100 programs in the report. I just wanted to point out a few programs in each one of these categories, but in the world of energy efficiency, National Grid, it's been recognized for its LED marketing campaign. A Vista Energy up in Spokane has an always-on energy calculator that it developed. Puget Sound, we'll talk a little bit about their program for renters. Burbank Water and Power, replace it before it breaks, kind of interesting idea. Silken Valley Power, heat pump pool heater incentives. Elevate Energy, I'll talk about with their multifamily energy savings programs. Just, just drilling into a couple examples and, and sort of giving you some sort of a sense of the breadth here. You know, here's a program specifically for renters, designed for renters, addresses in-unit energy efficiency, depending on income eligibility, a lot of direct install and incentives, and then also higher incentives for moderate income and income-qualified. Landlords, assurance that their participation is required in the program, free assessments, incentives for common areas, and program managers work with landlords to get bids for improvements from PSEs, Puget Sound Energy's Contractor Alliance Network members. So, they've certified contractors to do this work in their territory. Here's an interesting partnership out of Chicago. Elevate Energy, nonprofit organization focused on affordable housing, and has been working with Commonwealth Edison now for a number of years on a multifamily program. Same thing, owners save money and see, and see improved tenant retention. Tenants save money, enjoy better living conditions. So, they've, they've worked on about 28,000 units in their, in about the past 15 years. They partner with financial institutions to leverage, to leverage savings. They get 3% loans with seven-year terms by partnering with these community investment organizations. They use local certified contractors, and they're spreading this program. Now, they're in Chicago, Detroit, Lansing, Springfield, Illinois, Kansas City, Oakland, and Portland. We spoke to them about their program and their approach and their dedication to supporting low-income customers. And that's a theme throughout the best practices analysis that, and a recommendation is that in every one of these areas that we have a very much of a social equity focus. Best practices with load management, that's shifting load, moving load from periods of peak, lots of residential programs, information programs. We have a thermostat program here in Glendale. There's, now there's smart consumer actions that we're seeing, smart panels and smart breakers, different, different ways of controlling loads in homes that we never had before. Lots of demand response programs out there, you know, addressing that top 100 hours of the year when we really have a problem, we really need to bring back down our peak demand. Virtual power plants are the rage, and they're, they're spreading across the country. Obviously, there's lots of, lots and lots of demand response programs in, for the commercial sector. Featured programs, I talked about the statewide Flex Your Power Campaign. That was developed in, in the power crisis at, around, around the year 2000. And through that campaign, the state of California was able to save 5,000 megawatts out of a 50,000 megawatt peak. So, that campaign was developed in short order, and within six months was saving 10% of the peak demand. I have a home in Colorado, Holy Cross Energy is a co-op there, paying people to, to curtail load up to $2 a kilowatt hour. So, we're paying, here in Glendale, we're paying about, what, 17, 18 cents a kilowatt hour for power? Well, at times of peak demand, utilities are paying a lot of money to get people to, to curtail their power. Holy Cross, it's $2 an hour. Consolidated Edison, smart rewards program, they, they pay a hefty rate. Here's a company out of England, Octopus Energy. They're, they're going to be paying their consumers $4.50 a kilowatt hour to curtail their demand, and that's a cost-effective thing to do. A very creative company. They have a number of customers in Houston, Texas, and during a heat wave there, they actually rented a bar and invited people, told people if they set their thermostats at home to 80 degrees, they could come down and have free beers for as long as they wanted. So, there's, there's a lot of kind of crazy ideas. I'm, I'm going to talk about some. Own Connect, you've probably heard about Own Connect, headed up by a good friend of mine, and they're really working with gamification. So, they're taking this whole quest for energy efficiency and peak demand savings, and they're saying, we need to find ways to motivate people to do it. So, so they're game, they have, they have a, an app, and people go on and they figure out what they want to curtail, and they get, they get rewarded for it, and they can go and buy things in the marketplace, or they can get a bill credit or whatever they happen to want, whatever they want to do. You've probably heard about the emergency load, load reduction program, ELRP here in California, run by the statewide investor-owned utilities. They're paying up to $2 a kilowatt hour to curtail at, at times of peak demand. So, these are hefty incentives that are being paid because utilities are realizing that it's a better deal for them to avoid that peak demand than to, to pay, pay for it on the spot market. Con Ed in New York City, kind of interesting. You know, it used to be with demand response that you would have a big company like C-Power or Ener响应 or Willdan or one of these, Franklin, managing your demand response, and they'd work with large customers. Well, now, thanks to meters that are all fully automated, and we're collecting interval data on all the customers in New York City, now the Con Ed has aggregators that are aggregating residential consumers together. So, Own Connect, for example, is working in Con Ed's service territory, aggregating thousands of residential consumers together to, to be able to cut their load and to get rewarded. And then right alongside that are, are, are commercial customers that are also cutting their load. They have different tiers for pricing in the different boroughs of the city. Lower Manhattan actually has the, the highest pricing. And I was very interested that, well, this is pretty typical, and we've seen this in some of our proposals, that, that you'll have, you, you give a capacity payment to a demand response provider that's made a commitment, and you'll also give performance payments during the events. I was interested that Con Ed has a similar program for natural gas to, to cut their natural gas peak, not relevant to us, but. Here's Green Mountain Power, a good state of Vermont where I lived for many years. They, they instituted the first virtual power plant using Tesla Power Walls, and they, they were so successful with their pilot program using, with 400 homes, that they, and the wholesale electricity cost savings were so great that GM, Green Mountain Power, GMP subsequently offered Power Walls at a deep discount. So, customers are paying only $1,500 or $15 a month for their Power Walls. That's about a $5,000 value. So, with all of these, with all these battery programs, it's a partnership between consumers that want to have a battery on site to be able to have backup power when they need it, and a partnership with the utility that can draw on those batteries and draw a certain amount of that capacity from the battery to aggregate all those batteries together and to reduce the peak demand. There's different models for, for the Green Mountain Power program with different batteries and what depth of discharge you allow or control, that you allow the utility to have. With distributed energy resources, solar programs. With distributed energy resources, solar programs, low-income solar assistance programs, community solar energy storage, community energy storage, I'm going to talk about, there's different ways of addressing solar, which we certainly get into in our recommendations, our five-point solar program. But let me get into some of the, a couple of the programs here. Marin Clean Energy is, I think, really an exciting utility. And I mentioned earlier, the CCAs are doing very, very creative things with energy management. And we're really shifting, I wanted to say that at the onset, we're really shifting from a public benefits-funded set of activities for energy efficiency to now grid resources that utilities are valuing. That's why they're paying these large sums to shift loads. So the peak flex market program is a, is a, it's a program where Recurve, which is a vendor that I think we ought to have come to Glendale at some point, but Recurve is managing all of the distributed energy resources within MCE's territory. And so that can be homes, that could be businesses, ultimately they'll have vehicles, vehicle-to-grid integration, and they have a platform, it's called a Distributed Energy Resource Management System, a DERS, but a platform to control that. So that when the utility needs capacity, a signal goes out to Recurve, and then the signal goes out to their entire market, and the pricing is dynamic. So during these events, there's different, there's different levels of pricing that can be called upon to induce customers to take deeper levels of action. So Recurve is not only working for Marin Clean Energy, but now PG&E, East Bay Community Energy, Sonoma Clean Power, Bayren, and 3Cren. SMUD, Sacramento Municipal Utilities District, has always been, or at least for about the past 20 years, has been a leader with energy efficiency and load management and solar. They are one of the first utilities to create a viable community solar program, and now they've created a community storage program. And this is something that I've been kind of kicking around for a long time. So very much like community solar, if you can't host a battery system at your own site, you can have a share of a battery system that's in the community. You invest in it, and then you get bill credits as your investment is realized over time. So SMUD has started off with a 4-megawatt hour, 4-megawatt, 8-megawatt-hour battery for 4,000 shares of the program, and they're going to be expanding. But I think this is an exciting program that makes sense for, lots of customers might be business customers that don't want to put batteries on their site, could be renters even, in homes, just like community solar, that don't have a spot for batteries, but they could be part of this whole solution. And what I'm seeing in all of these utility programs is not a handout, right? It's a partnership. It's a way of value flowing back and forth between the utility and the consumer. I mentioned VGI earlier, or what's been known as V2G, vehicle-to-grid. You've probably all heard this, cars sit idle probably 95% of the time. So as we have more and more electric vehicles, that's a whole lot of batteries that are sitting in our service territory, doing basically nothing. So there's obviously an opportunity to link them all up with bidirectional inverters. There are companies like Nuvee that I mentioned earlier that are in the vehicle-to-grid business. This has been done in Europe, in Denmark, 10,000 cars were hooked up to a vehicle-to-grid, to a vehicle-to-grid system. They're, Nuvee is working with school districts, El Cajon Valley School District down in San Diego County, and is very interested in bringing programs to cities like ours. So lots of, lots of vehicle-to-grid opportunities. One of the, one of the issues is dynamic rates, making sure that people are charging at the right time as we have this vehicle, vehicle adoption going on. And then how do we, how do we get people to, how do we reward people for shifting? There's a, I guess there's a company called Geotab Energy that's out there with their Smart Charge Rewards program, which I'll talk about in a second. I want to just mention a couple of these other programs that we feature. PG&E has an Empower EV program. And so one of the issues, if you get an EV and you get a solar system, is that you may need a new panel. You may need a new circuit panel to accommodate that. So utilities are starting to provide incentives for that. Edison and others are, and LEDWP and others are providing used EV rebate programs for income-qualified customers, up to $4,000. Silicon Valley Power, electric bicycle rebates. So there's a lot going on. PG&E now has the first electric vehicle-to-grid rate. So now it's been, it's the first time it's been defined, if I have an electric vehicle and it's tied into the Glendale Water &amp; Power system, and Glendale Water &amp; Power draws on my vehicle based on the parameters that I've established, now there's a specific rate for that export value, and that's kind of an interesting development. I wanted to mention the Smart Charge program. This is kind of interesting, that very simple program that Con Ed pays consumers to enroll in the program, and then they connect their, then they connect with the EV's onboard telematics. So the onboard telematics will show what time of day the EV is charging. And if you just simply take a picture of the telematics and the settings that you've made, then you, then you're, all of a sudden, you're eligible for these incentives as you go, as we go forward. So Fleet Karma started out with fleet vehicles, but ultimately will be available for all sorts of residential consumers. I mentioned the EV rebate program already. Cross-cutting programs are also important, outreach and behavior change programs, rewards programs, I mentioned, I mentioned a few times, you know, this whole notion that, you know, we've been, we've been a pretty stodgy industry. You know, I've been in the electric power industry my whole career, and basically, you know, we're selling a commodity, right? And now we're really trying something different. We're trying to partner up. Our consumers are going to become prosumers as well. They're going to be producing as well as consuming, and we're going to be networking, and we're going to be managing all of that. And so there's interesting ideas from some consultants and some other analysts out there that try to take from other industry, like rewards programs. If you install X amount of energy efficiency, then you get this, or whatnot. I mean, you can kind of imagine, if we think about, you know, airline rewards or different types of rewards programs, what kinds of things could we bring to our industry? What kind of recognition could we give? Smart neighborhoods, financing, tariff on bill financing is a new, a new form of financing. We have PACE here, which puts a lien on a property. This tariff on bill financing is now being used in Hawaii and Virginia, and PG&E's looking at it, where actually it's putting a lien on the meter. It's putting a tariff on the meter, and if you move, that tariff remains on the meter until the energy efficiency measures or the solar measures have been amortized, their costs have been paid off completely. Review of GWP's programs and services. I think, I said this, I've said this several times, I think that GWP has done a fine job. I think GWP gets a B, a grade for its works with energy efficiency and certainly the public benefits programs. GWP, like all municipal utilities in California since 1890, has been spending about, just less than 2% a year on their public benefits programs. The energy efficiency portion of that is about half of that, or 30, or 40% of that. So energy efficiency has been a, maybe a 1% activity. May I say 1%? It's 1%, we spend about 1% of our annual sales on it, and we save about 1% of our annual sales through it. So it's a minor, minor activity. And what we're talking about with this best practices, and when we look around the country, and when we look around the world, and we start to see what utilities are doing now as they decarbonize, they're shifting big time. It's not a 1% or 2% solution. You know, we're going to, this report, we're suggesting that, you know, 30, 40% of our capacity could come from a suite of programs that come out of energy efficiency, load management, and distributed energy resources. We have, we have been award-winning in some programs. We've run 61 programs. I give staff credit for running, you know, new programs, for trying different things, but all within this relatively small budget. The PBC programs, let's see, we've saved 238 million kilowatt hours since the inception. It's about 10 million kilowatt hours a year. Let's see. In terms of our costs, we've spent $126 million since they began, about average of $5 million a year. I mentioned that about 40% of that has been spent on energy efficiency. Another 33%, 33% has been supporting low-income programs. I know it's, this table is not possible to read, I apologize for that. The main point is that we are, we are right, we are in the pack. We are in the pack of municipal utilities. Sometimes we're leading the pack, but we're in the pack of munis in terms of results, in terms of savings. But those savings are very, very, very small in the scheme of things. I want to mention a number of strategic, a few strategic considerations before giving you my recommendations. First off, electrification. We are in a, we are in a situation now where we are decarbonizing not only our vehicles, with electric vehicles, but we're decarbonizing our buildings also. And it's fascinating, this whole shift. So two major loads are about to be here, come to Glendale, and we're, so this only exacerbates our challenge, right? As we are trying to meet our peak, their peak is, will be growing rapidly. Whether it gets to 450 megawatts or 500 megawatts in the next five or 10 years, I don't know. But those are major trends, and what should we do about it? They're good trends, we're electrifying, we're decarbonizing, we're doing that on purpose, but we need to guide our residents to do it as cost-effectively as possible. We need to provide incentives for the best, for the best quality equipment, the most efficient equipment for our residents. Transition technologies, this is my least favorite part of the analysis, but I think it's worth mentioning. I see fuel cells as a transition technology. Ultimately, we'll be burning hydrogen, but, or be using hydrogen, not burning it, but microturbines as a technology, generators as a technology. I mentioned the statewide emergency load reduction programs that PG&E and Edison and San Diego Gas &amp; Electric are offering, and that $2 a kilowatt hour. Well, if you fire up a generator, a natural gas generator, or even a diesel generator, you get that price. So it's a reality that utilities are accepting second, you know, second-rate solutions like fuel cells and microturbines and generators. It's a small part of my recommendation, but I think it's interesting to include in the mix, and as I think you know, I was working for Glendale Community College District when we were trying to put a fuel cell in, and I thought it was a beneficial system, both for the college and for Glendale Water &amp; Power, and it didn't end up happening. Pricing options, I'm going to talk about my, one of my, I guess my number-two recommendation is to go to a mandatory time-of-use pricing option. If you roll out time-of-use correctly, and you educate consumers, and you provide them with energy storage, it can be a no-cost, a no-impact measure for a lot of consumers. And mandatory time-of-use pricing saves 5% to 10% of peak load, as we look across the country and look at other utilities, what they've done. Real-time pricing, it sort of takes that time-of-use to another level. We're used to real-time pricing for, when we buy our airline tickets. But the purpose with both time-of-use pricing and real-time pricing is to make sure that consumers are getting the appropriate signal, and they're using power at the right time. End-use pricing is something a little bit more far out, but there's a whole new trend in the, in the industry now where EAAS, energy as a service, managed energy savings accounts, where utilities now are providing different kinds of services for a price. So they're not only selling a commodity, a kilowatt hour, but they might be selling comfort, they might be selling torque, they might be selling energy resiliency services for a price, they might be selling EV charging services for a price. So as part of this whole transition to a distributed energy resource model is figuring out new ways for utilities to make money and to provide new valued services for their, for their customers. I wrote this last piece, seizing smaller chunks of capacity, this relates to our last discussion, the five megawatts. And I believe that as we go to a distributed energy resources model, and that we're drawing on local contractors, and that's very important for our local economic development or beneficial, that we will probably have to grab smaller chunks of capacity. And it probably will come from firms that are not as credit-worthy as we might like them to be, or they might not have the track record that we might like them to have, but I do believe that that's the reality. We're going from large centralized power plants to small, local distributed energy resources. And I think that our legal posture has to acknowledge that, or if you direct them to, we have to acknowledge that, and we go into this with a very different sort of mindset that we're really trying to develop partnerships with our consumers, and not all of our consumers are as sophisticated as we might like them to be. My recommendations. The first one is the toughest one, the fresh start, creating a movement. How do you create a movement? I mentioned the Flex Your Power campaign, maybe we want a Glendale Flex campaign, I don't know. How do we get people interested in this? Are they interested in saving peak capacity? Probably not. Are they interested in the climate? We know that they are interested in the climate. How do we forge, how do we forge a movement? How do we forge a campaign where people actually care about this stuff and do something about it and take action? That's the most difficult thing, that's my number-one recommendation. And the place that I think that we need to start is to have a vision for what we want to be and how we want to transform our utility. The second one is adjust the pricing, I mentioned that, the time-of-use pricing that I recommend. I think we can double our energy efficiency efforts and focus a lot of that on our low-income and moderate-income customers. We can ramp up distributed energy storage, we've talked about. We encourage more distributed energy resources, we talked about that. We meet the solar and storage mandate that the council has passed. I've developed in this report, I have a five-point solar program that I present, and I've priced out, and I've come up with participation rates to meet the solar mandate. So it includes net energy metering for solar, it includes the virtual power plants for solar, it includes community solar, feed-in tariff solar, and also city solar, and maximizing the, maximizing our capacity that we have in our, have in our city, on our city facilities, our municipal facilities. In every case, every kilowatt hour of solar is paired with a kilowatt hour of storage, actually four kilowatt hours of storage, so that we don't exacerbate the duck curve and the load profile problem that comes about from a lot of renewables on the grid. We're actually able to manage those renewables on the grid and to use them effectively. Number seven, create a banner vehicle-grid integration program. I think that the opportunities here are fantastic. We have lots of electric vehicles in Glendale and growing rapidly. Electric vehicles are being, are, the EV event the other, on Saturday was fantastic. I was there, drove four different vehicles, a lot of people were there, and I think we have an opportunity here to link together our vehicles with our grid. This is where I take an enormous leap, and I'm happy to share with anyone interested my spreadsheets, my, all of my assumptions. But where I try to, the painful exercise of trying to figure out, if we did all of these seven recommendations, if the stars all aligned, if the policymakers said, thou shalt, and we do this, then what would it look like in the next five years? What could we do? The fresh start, creating a movement. I have signed an actual megawatt, a peak load reduction value to that, based on an assumption that X number of households will participate and will save X percentage of their, of their peak. Mandatory time-of-use rates, I mentioned, that gives us about 15.6 megawatts if we do it right, and there's ways you can do it wrong, absolutely. Doubling efficiency, not a big contribution. Ramp up distributed energy storage, that is a pretty big contribution, 10 megawatts. Distributed energy resources, either the fuel cells, I don't see it as a big activity here. Exceeding the solar mandate with storage, 63 megawatts. Vehicle-grid integration scenarios, depending, present a pilot program and then a phase-one program and a phase-two program. So looking here at, you know, 100 to 125 megawatts of potential capacity for the, for the city of Glendale. And at that point, I will stop for questions or comments.
Okay. That was a lot of very exciting information, I appreciate that. Let's first see if my colleagues have questions. You probably don't know where to begin. Councilmember Devine.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have, well, I do have one que, well, I have a couple of comments first. I think that the one recommendation that you made, exceed the solar mandate and add storage. I was at the recent community meeting, and one of, a gentleman came up to me, and he said, I'm putting solar on my, on my rooftop, and he said, and I'm even adding the storage. He was so excited. So that's the kind of responses that we need. I appreciate this report, it was, it was lengthy, but it was interesting, and I have a lot of tabs to show for it. The creating a movement, you know, I think we've already started that with the Glendale Environmental Coalition, and I think we can expand on that. And, you know, I am a big proponent of collaboration, you know, and teamwork, that And, you know, I, I am a big proponent of collaboration, you know, and teamwork, that sort of thing. So I think that there are so many great ideas in this report, you know, and the question is where do we start? Where do we begin? We have our innovative director, and perhaps she can, with her, with her staff can pick and choose, or maybe we can do that. I like the fact of supporting low-income families, that's very important. The mandatory time of use pricing, I think is something that we should look, look into. How do we get Recurve to come to Glendale, to just give a, just talk to us?
I'm really glad you asked that question, because I think there's a lot of vendors that we want to lure to Glendale.
Yeah.
And I think that we, I, I don't think we, my recommendation would not be just to reissue an RFP and just do another, another fishing expedition.
Yeah.
I think we, my recommendation would be that we decide what we want. Now, we want to create like a flex market program, something. We bring Recurve in, we bring Generac Grid Services in. There's a number of vendors that provide that service. But yes, I think we lure them in. They all would like to come and give us a dog and pony show, what they can do. And they're all looking, they're all looking for new clients. So I think we, we identify who we want, and we reach out to them.
Yes.
And, and put a face on our, put a face on utilities.
Because, you know, I'm always reading about all these programs, you know, here's a, here's a, a city that's building a city within the city that's all electric. And they're gonna, they're have their storage, and they're going to be their own utility. And they're free of everybody else around them, except for, you know, they're running their own city. What about, I think that SMUD program, Sacramento, looks very interesting. What's, what was that, the Energy Shares Program?
The Storage Shares. Much like a wine storage facility, I think. Have you heard of those?
Now, there's a way of selling it. I was gonna say, how do we sell this free beer? Free wine? You know, but those are the kinds of things I think that we have to look at. I thank you for this report. I don't know that staff wants us to comment or pick and choose. I just think that, I think incentives are important. I think we have to look at incentives in the future for, for that storage. Like if someone puts solar on their rooftop, then let's incentivize them to do the storage, and then we can start working on a program like that. Oh, and this was what I wanted to ask you about. It seemed when I was reading your report, and you were talking about solar, and you were talking about Shoal Canyon. And it seemed when I was reading that, that you, well, you mentioned, you know, we could do all solar there, we could do, or not do anything there, just put the park there, or what, what is your, what, from your research and your recommendations, do we put solar there? Would we have enough room? Would we have enough capacity? What, what's the best? Because we're in a, you know, we're in a quadrant right now, is that the right word? About Shoal Canyon and the biogas project.
I'm, I'm a big believer that we need both. And when I was on the Glendale Water and Power Commission, I voted twice in favor of, a painful process, but I voted twice in favor of the biogas project. So I, I think, I think we need both. I think we need that renewable resource, and I think if we can also co-locate some solar there, that would be great as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Jarien?
Are there speakers?
Um, you, you want to wait? Okay. Councilmember Sotkin, any questions, or should we? Okay. So we have four speakers here in the chamber, and...
We have three callers.
Okay. First speaker is Monica Campagna.
Hello, council. Good evening. This feels like Christmas Day. Come early. Thank you, Ted. And thank you to GWP for embracing Ted and bringing him in the fold and, and the work of EcoMotion and just allowing it to permeate into the culture of our utility and hopefully provide some inspiration for new programs. It's really great to see that. I have a billion things to, just little things. I love the idea of an innovation center. I mean, can you imagine a, like a sustainability center here in Glendale which could demonstrate every program we have? Graywater Systems, solar, storage, energy efficiency products. You could, you know, have a place for contractors to come and do workshops, you could bring schoolchildren there, we could have native plants outside and drought tolerant systems and water capture systems, and then we could have classes for the contractors, like we could have conferences there. I just, you know, it could be a real hub for the city to start this. We've already started a culture of sustainability here. We've done some incredible things the last few years that we should be acknowledged for, and it's a place, we could have press conferences there. I mean, I just want to say that it would be a nice thing to think about, maybe at Bran Park or somewhere. You could offer your composts from there, you could do everything from there, could give away your bins for the worms, et cetera. I just have to say, this is the stuff we need to fund and finance first. Now, that, we don't want to hear that, but this is where, you know, we should put our resources first before we start talking about fossil fuels. This is the stuff that could carry us decades ahead. This is where we should be putting the money that we have set aside right now. This is where people should see that we're focusing, and then we can talk about other kinds of fuel. I just think that, that's the order of the loading order it should be. Hiring new staff to, to come into the fold and help with all these things that have a lot of excitement and experience in these areas, I think that's a really important point. Partnerships, I mean, we could have multifamily landlords coming together to talk about these new programs that we bring into the city. We could have a fair for tenants. We could have GUSD that has, they have 3.7 megawatts of solar right now, and I've been talking about how do we get them to participate in a battery storage program? You know, this, all summer, those schools sit there, and they could be like having storage that they sell back to the city, or have some kind of partnership. Call them up, see what could be worked out in that area. I think that they're, they would be interested. Partnering with, okay, the Galleria, five megawatts of solar was put on there by SolarOptimum, a local company, Road and Broadway. Let's get them, you know, Americana on board. There's so many other points I have in here, but just to say thank you very much. Let's keep going. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Monica.
I want to talk with regard to the objectives and the purpose of the public benefit program. I believe that's the topic that you have before you. I just found out that close to 4,000 households in Glendale are not able to pay their electric bill. They got a notice of impending shut-off, water and electricity. 5% of the population in Glendale, as of two days ago, were on giving notice that their electricity will be shut off. I think that's a topic of discussion for the public benefit program. When you talk about sustainable energy, great programs, glad that the city is moving in that direction, but when you talk about an EV program for electrical vehicles, you're talking about a higher percentage of the population that is financially one-off. A Tesla Model 3 is $50,000. You have a part of the population that is not able to pay their bill, and we're talking about subsidizing individuals who can afford a Tesla. I think there's, the emphasis maybe should be different. In 2009, I've made a study, and I presented it to city council with regard to what was done in Toronto, Canada, of individuals who could not afford to pay their electric bill. They devised a program where they paid prepaid it, they got a device, they put it in their home, and it actually counted down. So let's say they paid $50, it started counting down. They thought when the program was evaluated, that the, that the machines were not working. It wasn't that. It was that people cut their electricity by 20%. There is an example, a city, an effective program, but it required participation, and it did both. It reduced electricity, and it reduced the bill of individuals who are hard pressed for money. When you come to us as a consultant and, and give us a smorgasbord of programs after a while, it's almost like you got so much of it that nothing really gets done or actually expected or counted as for evaluation. Let me give you an example. This mandatory time of use was sold to us back in 2011 with regard to the smart meter program. Now we can get time of use program. Here this, 11 years later, we're still talking about that. That's what I mean. You come up with 24, 30, 40 different programs, and basically you lose sight of what's truly important. The low-hanging fruit is energy reduction, energy conservation. That's your low-hanging fruit. And if you can help the poor, if you can help the individuals who are having trouble or with an impending electricity shut-off, I think that's where the emphasis should be. Thank you very much. I didn't like your report.
Guillermo Prieto, again. Juliano, Juliano Prieto, sorry.
Hello, everybody, again. So as, as, by the way, I didn't come here for any of this tonight. I came here for my last comment of the night. But, but it just seems that I have been missing a lot of fun here at the city.
You can come anytime.
Where I can maybe add some, some commentary. I taught, I co-taught a class at the, at USC in the master's program for green construction. And one of the main things that, that we brought up was what was more efficient? A fuel-efficient Ford Focus or a Prius? And I really wanted everybody to just think about the entire lifecycle. And, and sometimes there's, there's a certain narrative that, that, you know, that is only one way, and we have a lot of lobbied money towards solar, towards all sorts of different infrastructure projects of the future. I like that you brought up the transition, some of the transition items, because I feel like we're missing a major transitionary step. And sometimes that transitionary step, if it, if it goes missing, we end up being Texas in a snowstorm. We really need to focus on what is the most efficient. Now, we do have a power plant, we do have a lot of methane being produced and off-gassed. As a civil engineering contractor, we do a lot of landfill projects. Are, are we maximizing all of the low-hanging energy that we already have in place on a massively large scale? There is so much energy to be harvested out of that landfill. And while doing so, we can also clean the air. There is a massive amount of energy that we can harvest out of that power plant. We just need to clean it up a little bit more. And I don't think that some of these items are being addressed, because we're trying to skip a step because of a certain narrative. And I'll be the first one to plant a tree. I'll be the first one to say, hey, yeah, I like the idea of, of having cars charge up at night and then set a certain amount of the car energy to be diverted during the day during peak hours, but still enough for me to get home. But yeah, I'll charge up at night, I'll sell it back to the city for a certain amount, and then I can, I can offset some of those things. Those are fantastic ideas. In fact, maybe I can charge up my car at night with the solar that I sent to the battery pack. But all of the smaller energy ideas that we bring up, we just need to be very careful where there might be larger, lower-hanging fruit, such as investments in other solar arrays, investments in other areas, rather than trying to bring so much urbanized battery and solar technology. So those are my two bits.
Thank you. Okay. And Kate Unger.
Hello, again, hello again, everybody. I always forget to say my name, Kate Unger. It's nice to be back again. I'm going to try to make this really short. It's been a long night. That was an incredibly great presentation, so many great ideas on the demand side, and I just wanted to make a comment about that. The traditional model is the demand is out there, you can't change it, you have to meet it with the supply. The new model is the demand and supply can meet each other. It's much more dynamic, it's really exciting. In particular, I wanted to say we don't need to be afraid of the peak because of electrification, because all of these demand-side solutions address the peak. I was just looking at an academic study about EV charging with high charging infrastructure diffusion, it's really like academic ease. Changes in plug-in behavior can reduce the peak load and shift load by up to 80%. So it's not a problem, it's part of the solution. And finally, I would just say, imagine if we did all of this, what will the world think of Glendale? It would be so exciting. Let's do it. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Kate. And we have...
We have four callers. Our first caller is Jackie Gish. Jackie, you're on air, you have three minutes.
Thank you. The other part of what I was going to say before, I want to echo, I'm very impressed with the thorough best practices analysis report done by EcoMotion. There are so many terrific ideas for multiple jurisdictions and organizations that Glendale could use. I urge city council not just to quote, note and file this report, but to urge GWP and perhaps the GWP Sustainability Committee, and GWP and Sustainability Commission to thoroughly digest the report and come back to council with specific recommendations that Glendale should pursue. Proceeding first with Grayson and Shoal without additional clean energy program reinforces the feeling that Glendale residents have that GWP in Glendale push gas-burning old technology at the expense of our future. We want less greenhouse gases and less pollution to be the priority. Let's not spend all our money on these old technologies and instead adopt some of EcoMotion's great recommendations for Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next caller is David Eisenberg. David, you're on air, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Brockman and councilmembers. And before I start, I'd like to give my best wishes to Mayor Sotkin, and hope he has a quick recovery. I've been a resident of Glendale since 1985, I'm a homeowner here. And this is a great report, and I applaud the city for even asking for this type of analysis. But as the previous caller said, I, the note and file option, it's very tempting, there's so many things to be done, but it is important that the, to the council tonight negotiate, talk with Mr. Galanian and Mr. Flanagan, and figure out a timeline where these items can come to council in some, in some kind of form, where each item can be scheduled. I know you can't, you can't decide on a program right now, there's, you know, once you decide on a direction, but give a direction that you would like to see some specific results at a specific time. And I think that will be the thing to, I would love to see 125 megawatts of clean energy that's possible under all these programs, and I'd like to see us get there as soon as possible. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next caller is Jack Woolworth. Jack, you're on air, you have three minutes.
Hello, Mayor Sotkin and city councilmembers. I'm pretty much echoing what a lot of others have said already, that I agree with. I think it was an incredible report, and I want to thank everyone for putting it together, massive and very detailed. Every one of these programs has a creative, real-world example that has a proven record, and that, that's key. They all point to a future of clean energy really going to help this planet heal. And the seven recommendations at the end, I, I know that everyone's read them already and heard the report, but I want to emphasize what I think is the most important point. They call this the fresh start, the creating a movement. If we're going to take a step into the future of clean energy, we need to get everyone on board. City council, city staff, our community leaders, and every person that turns on a light in this city. This is more than a PR campaign. This requires a change of culture where we can all see the benefits. To change hearts and minds, we need to look closely at this report and put it into action. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final caller is Joseph Cascagni. Joseph, you're on air, you have three minutes. Mr. Cascagni, you're on air.
No, nothing? Okay. Okay, you could try, we could try him again in a minute. Let's, we'll, we'll move on. Getting late. Let's, let's hear... on. Getting late. Let's, let's hear from my colleagues. Do you have...
Just, you know, just briefly, great report, such a wide range of measures. I mean, where were these people when we went out for our RFP two years ago? And we've got a Franklin that's failing on their thing, and you're showing us all these great examples and great ideas on energy conservation and demand side, and you've shown us how we can knock off 125 megawatts. Maybe you should have applied for the RFP and submitted a proposal. I'm serious. I mean, here, here again is, there's great ideas here. It's worked in other places, but in Glendale, we've fallen flat. We're getting 2 megawatts or 3 megawatts? What are we getting, Mark? Somewhere, I mean, it's in the single digits. So, I'm like, what's going on here? And anyway, I think what's going on is we need to, we need to build some rapport with these groups and maybe bring them in.
I think so.
Ask them for unsolicited proposals, because we're just, Lyman and Franklin are just not doing it for us. Thank you. That's...
Pastor Asatrian?
Thank you for the report. I think it's very extensive. I love all the stuff that I'm seeing in there, especially the recommendations. I think my only direct, I have a couple of directions, I think, opposed to staff. One is, as you develop the budget, for us to figure out how we're incorporating some of this into the budget. A report's only a report until it's implemented. We have many reports like that in the city that can take too long, and this is the perfect time to actually look at how we're spending the assets that we have. You know, Mr. Flanagan and I spoke about this during the staff meeting yesterday, but we can come up with all the wonderful programs, but if the community members are not educated and educated properly, then they're not as efficient and effective as, as they could be. And so, you know, this is something that I'm seeing across almost all of our departments. And, you know, instead of me coming here every Tuesday and talking about how we didn't do proper public education and outreach, I think there's a, a need for us to actually invest in proper communication staff across the departments. That includes GWP. You know, I said this during the staff meeting yesterday, when you have an engineer that's doing public outreach and engagement, you are setting your employee up to fail. It's like asking the communication staff to go and fix the electrical hole. And so, I hope that as we're looking to develop these and our upcoming budget, that we take these things into consideration. And thank you again to everybody that worked on this.
Thank you. And, okay, I do have a few things, obviously. The first thing is, we've billed this as a public benefit charge report, but it really is not. It's really about best practices. And if you look around at these things, these are things that, many of them, we are going to want and need to do outside of the PBC budget, because that's too constraining. So, I, I just want to make sure we're clear that this is, we're talking about a lot more than that, what is it, 2, 3.5%? What do we, what is it, the PBC budget? 2%?
About 2.
About 2%. Okay. Just, yeah, want to make that. I, I really appreciate this report. Thank you, Ted, and everybody at EcoMotion that took part in it. I mean, I think it, it met the objective of kind of telling us what the opportunity set is and giving us a rough order of magnitude of what Glendale could achieve if it really went and, and started to pursue some of these approaches. And I think talking to you, you know, you're, you're not just coming up with some crazy numbers without any basis. I think, I think these are, these are achievable numbers. Whether we achieve them is, is, is really going to depend, as you said, on our culture and our capacity. And I think the, the first takeaway for me is that we need staff, starting from the city manager and from Mark Young, our head of GWP, to tell us what you need from us in terms of people and, and budget to make some of these things happen. Because I realize that, you know, we're very thin, and we can throw all this stuff on GWP, and there's only so much they can do. So, I really think we, we are going to have to have a serious conversation about, you know, building up a team that can pursue some of these things. Because as it is now, we're just, we're just, as they say, pushing against the string, right? Nothing is going to happen at the other end unless we have the capacity. So, I'll leave that with you, Mr. Galanian, to figure out what is it that we do so that we are able to actually, you know, achieve some of that. So, that's, I think that's one really important thing. And I think we also need support from the legal side. We can't forget legal. We're going to need resources to support a lot of these things and, and a more creative and a more flexible approach, given the kinds of projects that we're working on that are so different from what we're used to doing in the, in our utility business. I want to mention one thing. I had the opportunity to talk to the vice chair of the California Energy Commission, this morning, actually. Just so happened to be this morning. He's leading the Energy Commission's distributed energy resources and load, kind of peak shaving efforts statewide. He, and I, you know, he's very excited about working with us. You know, I kind of said, hey, let us be a pilot for some of these new things, like vehicle-to-grid integration and some of these other demand response programs that they're interested in. He was telling me, I mean, a couple of things. First, there's a lot of money. There's a pot of $700 million that the state allocated for peak shaving. They're going to come out with program rules in, in next month. There's another $1 billion that's been set aside by the legislature, not yet programmed by the CEC to, to handle kind of SB 100, getting to 100% clean energy. And, and he said, look, we, we should kind of come up with a plan. He said, for 30 to 40 million dollars. He gave that number. He thinks we can get 30 to 40 million from, from that bucket. He said, for 30 to 40 million, tell us, you know, what you think you can do. And he said, the way they're going to look at this is, they're going to look at speed, how fast we can get it online, because they're desperate. They're scared, right, of not meeting load in the summers. So, speed is really important. Cost per megawatt is important, and is it clean? Right? And so, I think, and, and they offer to provide us technical assistance right now. And I have a contact, and I'll, I'll line you up. Somebody, Mark, you already know, because you've spoken to him before. He told me that. And he had, he had very good things to say about, about GWP. So, I think they like us already. But we should work with them, getting some help in framing what we can do for this 30 to 40 million dollars, which is a number he thought was totally doable for us if we act quickly. So, I wanted to say that I, and some of the things I think are, like, as I said, vehicle-to-grid pilot, programs where we have solar and we have battery incentives where the batteries are tied to the grid and managed through that Derm platform that we talked about, things like, you know, advanced load management, like a richer type of thermostat program like we have. He also specifically mentioned, he said, want to, maybe Glendale and Burbank could work with Disney and do something really interesting with Disney that would meet some of their clean energy goals as well, or their, you know, sustainability goals, and maybe a program to reduce loads at Disney. And he mentioned hospital microgrids as well as a, as a big opportunity. So, I really want, I want us to follow up on that. I think some of the things that I would like us to really start to work on now are mandatory time-of-use pricing. I think the time is right for that. And maybe look at more, that more dynamic pricing model specifically for EV charging, so that we can find ways to get people to charge during the day when we have a lot of excess solar. I'd like us to look at reducing some of these artificial caps we have on generation, the 1-megawatt cap we have that's been a constraint, I think, at Glendale College and elsewhere, the 100% for solar, where we limit the solar customers' system to 100% of their, you know, past year's energy use, which doesn't help if somebody's planning to get an EV or planning to put in an ADU. They want to plan for more solar. We should allow that. And we need a competitive feed-in tariff program. Our feed-in tariff program has gotten no takers. LA's has gotten quite a lot of takers. I think we just need a competitive program, and we'll get people to come to us. We need to streamline our solar permitting. We know that. We've talked about that, and there's state legislation that says we have to do that by, I think, next year. So, we need an online platform to make it easier for people to get their solar systems permitted. And maybe if they're coupling it with batteries, we waive the permit fees or do something like that, something that we're encouraging those batteries. The city cited solar, I know is that's going to be coming back, and that's, I think, low hanging fruit for us. And a community solar program, Ted, I really liked what you, you wrote about this one in Colorado, where people can kind of buy a panel that's located somewhere else, right? Their own house is shaded. They can't put up solar, or they're in an apartment, or somehow they're, they can't have their own system. But they could buy a panel that's sitting somewhere else and get all the energy benefit from that. And I think that would be great for people, especially our, you know, people, tenants who otherwise would just not be able to participate. And I also would like us to look, we're talking about, and I'm almost done, public benefit charge. When we do talk about public benefit charge, I think half of that money goes to bill support. And I've said this for a long time, I'd really like us to support people through things that are going to give a permanent savings, like energy efficiency, like use some of that money, rather than just give somebody a reduction in their bill, to give them an energy-efficient air conditioner, or an energy-efficient refrigerator, something that's going to permanently lower their costs. I think we need to think that way, as opposed to, you know, teach them how to fish rather than giving them a fish. Right? So, that's, those are, those would be some of the things I'd like us to pursue. And Councilmember Asatrian, you have, you want to add? Thank you. Go ahead.
No, I just...
Oh, okay. With that, we can take a motion. Want to, you want to take a motion?
Mayor Protem Brockman, we have Joseph Kascanyan on, on the phone.
Oh, let's hear from him. Yes, because he got cut off.
Joseph, you're on air. You have three minutes to speak. Joseph Kascanyan, are you there? Joseph? Yes. You have three minutes.
Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I'm, I'm so sorry. My phone has been acting up, but I really thank you all again for taking the time to listen in. I just want to thank you all for putting together this presentation. I think it's really important for the city of Glendale to be having these discussions, and especially us moving towards more energy efficiency. The city is definitely in need of a more energy-efficient program, definitely in support of educating our community about these different incentives as well. It's definitely a culture shift, and one that's going to take some time for us to, you know, one for, one for definitely to take part in. But I believe Glendale has always been the leader in our communities, and this is the first step that I believe we should take to making sure that we are the energy-efficient model in our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so now we'll take a motion?
I'll, I'll move alternative two, which is to note and file this report, as well as provide further direction to staff relating to the same.
Okay. And second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Divine. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Asatrian?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Kazakian?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Brockman?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you to you. What's next?
Next is Action Item C, Information Technology Department regarding renewal of Verizon Wireless Agreement. One, resolution dispensing with competitive bidding and authorize the Deputy Director of Finance purchasing to execute a purchase order with Verizon Wireless for wireless data, voice, and accessories for a period of two years for an amount not to exceed $600,000.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian?
Mayor Protem Brockman, my City Council. I'm going to invite Jason Miller, our Assistant Chief Information Officer, to present this item for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Galanian, Mayor Protem, council members. Tonight, I present to you an extension of the Verizon contract. We've been leveraging this contract since 2012 to provide LTE services to the city. However, in May of 2021, we did an assessment of three of the LTE providers in the world, not, in the area, T-Mobile, Verizon, and AT&amp;T. It was determined that, that T-Mobile was the lowest-cost provider for the city, and by charter, we have to go with the lowest-cost provider. One of the challenges we have had is, we had over 1,500 devices on the LTE environment. We have migrated almost 940 of those devices, but we have about 450 of those devices still to go. So, we need a little bit more time, essentially, to use the Verizon contract until we can get everything moved. It certainly is not our intent to expand the Verizon services. It's certainly just the time to get all this stuff covered. Some of those things that are currently on the Verizon contract is our police vehicles, our fire vehicles, and some personal devices that are still under contract. With that, that's kind of the report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to help.
Thank you. Any questions? Now, do we have any calls on this item?
We do not. We had a speaker card, but the speaker left.
Okay. I'll move the item if you're ready for that.
Thank you. Yes.
Second.
Okay, let's have a roll call then. Quick and easy. Roll call?
Councilmember Asatrian?
Yes.
Divine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Kazakian?
Yes. Thank you. And what's next?
Next are hearings. A, Hearing A, Community Development Regarding Amendments to the 2021-20 to 2029 Glendale Housing Element Previously Adopted by City Council on February 1st, 2022. One, Resolution Adopting Revised 2021 Through 2029 Glendale Housing Element Previously Adopted by City Council on February 1st, 2022.
Thank you. Mr. Galanian?
Yes, Mayor Protem Brockman, Member of City Council. This housing element, the city's housing element, the sixth cycle, has been revised in, in response and in accordance to the comments that we received from the California Department of Housing and Community Development. And the original, the housing element was adopted by council in February of this year. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Bradley Calvert, our Community Development Director, for the introduction, and also introducing a consultant who's worked on this, the revisions to the housing element.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Protem...
Before we start, sorry, this is a hearing. So, I'll open the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Protem and Councilmember. As you're aware, this is one of the city's highest priorities to, to get our, our housing adopter, housing element adopted and submitted to HCD. As you're aware, as, as the city manager acknowledged, this has been adopted before. We received comments back from HCD, and what you're going to hear tonight are, are those changes that reflect our response to those, those comments. So, with us tonight is Amanda Tropiano. She's here to walk you through those changes. We also have our Deputy Director of Community Development, Eric Kraus, our Principal Planner, Kristin Asp, both of who have dedicated a significant amount of their time in the past year or more on this project. And I'd just like to turn it over to Amanda to, to walk us through these changes.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me, and it's nice to see you in person. I am excited to share with you some of the technical revisions made to the housing element that you reviewed and adopted earlier this year in February. My presentation is brief, and I'll be available to answer any questions you may have. I'm going to focus this discussion on the work that has occurred since the item was before you in early February of this year, specifically on the state's review of the city's adopted housing element and the technical revisions that they requested be made to that document that are before you tonight. As a reminder, the City Council adopted its 2021 to 2029 housing element in early February of 2022. And subsequent to that direction, the city submitted the adopted element to the State Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD, or a state-required 60-day review of that element. The city received a series of technical revisions or findings that would be required to be made to the city's housing element 60 days later on April 22nd of 2022. This is a very typical process that cities and counties throughout the state... This is a very typical process that cities and counties throughout the state go through in reviewing and revising their housing element. The process of working with HCD through this review and revision process is what we are providing you the update for tonight. In general, the technical revisions required in response to the department's findings focused on four key areas. Additional analysis in the new requirement to study the city's duty to affirmatively further fair housing, or AFFH. You may remember that this is a new component of housing elements prepared for this cycle, and the state's direction on this topic, I'll say, is evolving. So they're continuing to provide additional information and guidance on this specific topic area. We were also asked to address some questions as they relate to the city's site's inventory or its ability to accommodate its regional housing needs allocation, or its RENA, some additional analysis on constraints to housing, as well as some specific modifications to the housing programs included in the housing plan. To help facilitate the public's review of the revisions made to the document, they are shown and track changes on the electronic version, as well as highlighted in yellow on the revised element. I also wanted to provide an update as to the status of the certified or completed compliant housing elements throughout the Southern California region. The SCAG region has 196 agencies, and as of mid-November, 40% of them, 79, had been found in compliance. As you can see, this continues to be a priority for cities to pursue progress on these housing elements. It is an extremely challenging cycle unlike anything incurred in previous periods. L.A. County is right at that regional average at 39% as of mid-November. 35 of the 89 agencies in L.A. County had been found in compliance. I would also point out that the San Diego region preceded this SCAG region by about six months, and fast forward two years later of their 19 agencies, only 10 have been found in compliance. So we are working diligently to address thoroughly all of the department's comments on your adopted element to a satisfactory status so that we can get the city in compliance as quickly as possible. In terms of the kind of infrastructure of the housing element, there are two key chapters of it. The first is the first part regarding the housing plan. This is where your goals, policies, and programs live. This is the first 50 or 60 pages or so of the housing element. We have specifically included revisions to the city's housing programs, as well as its quantified objectives. There were no changes to the city's goals or policies. Part two is the next 250 pages or so. This is where we talk about the city's progress towards meeting its prior cycle or its fifth cycle housing element, as well as presenting an assessment of current and future housing needs, an analysis of the constraints to housing development, as well as the availability of housing resources, and that analysis of fair housing section. Specific revisions were made to three of those sections, the constraints to housing development, housing resources, and the assessment of fair housing. We've also updated both appendices, the first being the list of adequate sites available to meet the city's RENA, as well as a progress update of the Continued Public Engagement Program that the city pursues as part of this update. I'm going to provide an overview in detail of what these changes included so you can have a better understanding of these revisions that were requested and how the city responded. In terms of the fair housing analysis, we've added additional information regarding fair housing statistics and other qualitative information regarding specific topic areas outlined in the department's findings. So this is a lot of additional background research and information. We also added additional local and regional analysis discussions to the specified fair housing topics, things like persons with disabilities, single female-headed households, lower-income households, senior households. These are all topics required to be studied in the fair housing analysis, and we expanded that discussion. We also added a new section where we were able to quantify the site's inventory as it related to the various indicators of fair housing, and added specific metrics and milestones to the fair housing programs that I will describe later in a subsequent slide. The city's site inventory has also been updated. I will start with the confirmation that the city continues to demonstrate that it has adequate sites available to accommodate its regional housing needs without rezoning or upzoning any property. The city has sufficient sites already designated and approved for residential development, and we continue to demonstrate the adequacy of those sites as they relate to accommodating your RENA. So that fundamental principle has not changed as part of this update. What we have provided is additional clarification on the status and affordability of the projects that are ongoing or proposed that had been previously listed in the element. You may remember, we also had a very in-depth discussion with the department regarding the city's proactive measures to dedicate existing residential units for deed-restricted moderate-income units. To my knowledge, the city of Glendale is the only jurisdiction in the state that is pursuing this kind of narrow window of availability of counting the units. We had thought that we would be able to keep 125 of those units in the inventory. There is very clear state statute written in housing element law as to the specific timeframes that those units had to be dedicated in order to be counted as a credit towards your RENA. Unfortunately, it did not meet those requirements. But with that said, when the city demonstrates annual progress towards actually meeting its RENA, those units will be counted. So you will get credit for those in your annual progress report just due to this technical issue. They cannot be listed in the housing element. We also did provide additional project examples related to adequate capacity, expanded an analysis on the non-vacant sites inventory. We identified 15 additional sites that are designated for commercial, in commercial zones where residential uses are already permitted, that meet those specific characteristics and could be added to the inventory, demonstrating even additional sites available to accommodate the city's RENA. We expanded the discussion of unique site characteristics and provided some additional clarification on existing zoning standards related to specific uses. The map demonstrating the location of these RENA sites has been updated. You can see that we have removed, removed as a strategy of developing credits towards the city's RENA, that preservation of those 125 deed-restricted moderate-income units, and we have added an additional strategy to accommodate the RENA, identifying those 15 underutilized commercial sites. Again, those already permit the development of residential uses. This is simply a summary of the snapshot. You've seen a progression of this table over the past two years where we've quantified how many units are developed in each of these categories and how the city continues to demonstrate its ability to accommodate its RENA. We have, in this table, updated it to remove those sites associated with the deed restriction of the moderate-income units and added an additional 586 units as potentially being developed within those 15 commercial sites. The city continues to demonstrate that it maintains adequate sites, including a surplus of available sites to accommodate its RENA at all income levels. And that brings us to a discussion of the constraints. Again, a lot of clarification and analysis, provided some additional clarification on how residential uses are permitted, where they're allowed to go, some additional analysis on constraints associated with the city's specific development standards, so things like heights, lot coverage, parking requirements, and things like that. Provided a lot of clarification on the city's existing fees and exactions, the city's local processing and permit procedures, on- and off-site improvements, and we've included several new programs to identify constraints that HCD identified associated with specifically the city's zoning and development code that are required in order to reduce government constraints, which is part of the obligations of a city's housing element. So most of the modifications were made to the housing plan or the actions and programs included in that, so I did want to be specific about those modifications so you can see those changes. In all cases, these changes were made in order to address a finding from HCD. So we have included the specific finding that relates to each of these changes, and it is my recommendation that these be considered as necessary to adequately address their findings and help the housing element be found in compliance. We did add additional program revisions to respond to the new analysis, and we went through a very strategic process to confirm that the fair housing programs did meet the four qualifications that HCD requires, and that they include a specific commitment, a specific metric, a timeframe, and a geographic target. This is simply a summary of how each of those four revisions played out in the revisions to the programs identified to support the city's duty to affirmatively further fair housing. In the vast majority of cases, programs related to fair housing were modified to include some sort of geographic target. That would mean where we had a program that talked about public education or kind of focusing resources, we added a geographic component to that, for example, to focus in areas where there are higher proportions of renter occupants or in areas where the household income is lower than other areas, so adding a geographic component. We also added some specific metrics, so ways that the city can track progress, which was helpful in determining if the program is being successful or if it needs modification. And in some cases, we also clarified an additional timeframe. We summarized the components of this as part of Program 7C, where we've added a new table to clearly identify how each of the programs meet these requirements. The city's site inventory has also been updated in response to these specific four items. In general, those were modified to include a timeframe, so more specificity as to the requirements to when staff would undertake this particular assignment associated with the program and either work internally as part of the administrative process or bring it forward to the council for consideration. We also modified several programs as they relate to government constraints, both including additional timeframes for two programs, as well as some specific updates to Program 9B, which is a list of the zoning code amendments that are required in order for the housing element to be approved. The city has to commit to certain updates to its zoning code consistent with state law, and this is the program that houses those updates. Specifically, the state has identified, based on the additional analysis, a number of programs that would need to be included to this action item related to removing those government constraints. And if you remember from some of my previous presentations, one of the key statutory requirements of the housing element and of the city is to reduce government constraints to the maximum amount feasible, and this is kind of a cornerstone of housing element statute law and a component of receiving a certification of a housing element. So where do we go from here? We're before you tonight to present these changes, answer any questions you may have, and seek your direction on re-adopting the revised housing element so that we can resubmit it to the Department of Housing and Community Development for another review period. I would like to stress that we have been working closely with staff and with representatives from HCD to the maximum extent feasible over the last six months to proactively address these changes to their satisfaction in a way that represents Glendale's vision and values, and we expect to hear back from them following your direction should the housing element be re-adopted and resubmitted. We would hear back from them by mid-February. They have been open to dialogue and conversations through this process, and we expect that to continue during this review period. So with that concludes my presentation, and staff and myself are available to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
I have a question, and this is for the benefit of all the developers who have contacted me. The city of Glendale is not in the penalty status mode in which the builder's remedy may be exercised at this time. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So don't submit plans for a 200-story tower next to the Americana, because that may be the case in other cities, but not in this city, because what, I forgot your name?
Amanda.
Amanda has told us that we are working with her and staff with HCD to comply with all their requirements, and that is, in fact, what we're doing tonight, is adopting the revisions and potential shortcomings in our originally adopted plan from February.
That's exactly correct.
Okay. Thank you. Just wanted to.
Okay. Councilmember Divine?
Thank you. Thank you for this report, and what a tremendous job this was. I mean, this, just going through this was, must have, well, what did you say, a year, Kristin, working on this and Amanda? Couple of things that I just wanted to bring out on this report. There were, we have to remove constraints on residential care facilities, so what are we required to do in our city?
I'm going to toggle back to this separate slide here. So we are required to comply with state law as it relates to the state requirements on how our residential care facilities are regulated. This is a particularly hot topic in housing element updates this cycle. I have, I know for a fact that there are numerous housing elements that are being held up because they have not adequately addressed this, but we have here. The city is required to, again, implement state law by updating your zoning to ensure that your zoning code permits group homes objectively and with approval certainty consistent with state law. That is the commitment that we've made in this program. What that means is that persons looking to utilize or develop this type of use in the city, they must follow city's objective standards and that they must know what is expected of them when they come in for review and consideration. So again, this is consistent with state law, and we have received direction that this is an adequate commitment that achieves this finding.
So does that mean that we don't have to change our zoning or any of our laws, ordinances?
You will have to make some modifications, but not beyond what is required to implement fair housing law that would regulate the use anyways. If an applicant was to have a concern or perceive that their fair housing rates had been violated, of course, the state law would require implementation of that anyways. So the zoning code would be updated just to reflect the state law requirements, nothing beyond that.
Okay, great. And the other one I wanted to ask about was the incentive, to incentivize ADUs for very low or moderate-income families. That would be a change, wouldn't it, and a difficult one, maybe?
What we've suggested in the program is that the city evaluate ways that that can happen. We don't know how ADUs could be incentivized for use by lower-income or moderate-income households, but we'd like the opportunity to consider that and to see ways that those types of smaller units, second units, can help provide new opportunities for more attainable housing in Glendale. So the commitment is to research that and to consider options available, report back to the Planning Commission and to the city council for direction on any, if any, programs should be implemented.
Okay. And the other one, how are we addressing the substandard housing and need for rehabilitation? Yes.
So the city utilizes a number of existing financing tools available to assist homeowners based on largely their income to support moderate to major home renovations. Those continue to be successful. This is part of a carryover program from the city's current housing element, and the utilization of those funds would continue to be dedicated to the revitalization and renovation of those existing homes.
Now, the report said that we do 1,400 inspections a year? That's a lot of inspections.
Sounds about right.
I mean, that's a good thing. That's a good thing.
Yes, that sounds, that sounds right, and it is a huge undertaking.
Yeah. So, but we've promised or we've said that we would, we would continue that. And another question that was on there was about the enforcing our just cause and retaliatory eviction ordinances. And do we need to do anything about that? Have we, have you analyzed that and kind of come to a conclusion for the CD?
Yes, we've, the city continues to maintain a policy that commits itself to implementing that provision and ordinance, and we've provided additional analysis and clarification as to the process of how that ordinance is applied to instances where, you know, a resident or a property owner may want to utilize the provisions of that ordinance. And so we've expanded that discussion in the background report. We have not recommended any changes to the way that the city writes that ordinance. You continue to be committed to implementing it effectively, and we've just provided additional background and analysis.
Well, good. Okay, I just want to say that these RENA numbers really upset all of the cities that belong to SCAG. I know they were very angry. It's almost like they want us to fail at this. Glendale has always been, as someone said, a good actor in this realm. Glendale has always been, as someone said, a good actor in this realm, and I don't know why they're asking us to. It's like almost as if we're over-analyzing everything, but I appreciate what you've done, and good luck. I hope this gets us where we want to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Satrian? No, no questions? Okay. Okay, same with me. So we'll go to the callers or we'll go to the speakers. We have two speakers in chambers, and do we have any callers?
We do not have any callers.
Okay, so we'll start with Karen Kwak. We have three minutes.
Hi. Sorry, I'm still a little bit sick, like many of you. I'm Karen Kwak, and this is not the first time I'm discussing the housing element with you, generally over email. And I'm going to start with a question. Okay, how many of you read through all 900-plus pages that dealt with the housing element in this week's packet? Any hands? Because honestly, one week is very little time to read that amount of material, even if you had nothing else to do, and most of us had a lot of other things to do. But I noticed that seven months elapsed between the time that HCD sent their feedback and the time that the revised housing draft was presented to the Planning Commission. You know, seven months is a long time. As Councilmember Satrian mentioned earlier, this is one of those documents that it's just taking way too much time to put together. And this is apparently only supposed to be the first stage of actually implementing the plan. We've been at this for nearly two years already. But things don't have to be this way. Councilmember Broadman mentioned the recent election. There were two items that featured tenant-led initiatives. That was Measure H in Pasadena and Measure ULA in Los Angeles. Now, tenants generated the ideas, drafted the policies, found ways to pay for it, and got it passed, all within the same timeframe that we've been, you know, discussing this document before we even put it into action. Okay, because that is how people act when they actually want to solve the housing crisis. People who live it every day are highly motivated to actually get it done instead of just sitting here talking about a document forever. And you know what? I have a hard time believing that the city placed high priority on this document, because, again, the comparison of what could have been done in the timeframe, and also, I've been asking for updates on this element for a long time. Every time I asked for an update, the timetable kept getting pushed back with no explanation. And honestly, that's completely in line with what I expect from the city, because your main concern about the housing element seemed to be, don't put those poor people in our precious single-family neighborhoods. And I believe the housing element gives you that, that seems to be the end of your concern. Okay, so I'm also going to point out that in Pasadena, Run Control passed with the support of only one of their seven councilmembers. And that tells you flat out that the people who run City Hall do not represent the people who live there. I'm also going to point out that the people who think that what urban renters want most is park space, I'm going to point out that in LA, Measure SP failed. That was a parcel tax on getting more park space. You know, park space is always nice. You know, who doesn't like park space? But that is not the issue that will get us to knock on doors every weekend like Measure ULA, which, by the way, is a progressive tax to pay for more housing and tenant rights, as opposed to Measure S in Glendale, which is a progressive sales tax, which hurts lower-income people harder. Okay, so, number one, you don't represent us. Number two, you don't listen to us. But honestly, we're the ones with the drive and the idea to get this done, and you seem to think that it's your job. Spend all your time talking to 260 developers and consider a great nuisance to do the bare minimum of legally mandated outreach to tenants. But honestly, this is a problem that we're the ones most motivated to solve, and we'd be happy to help you make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ramela Irani? Did I pronounce that right?
Whatever. I'm not picky about pronouncing my name. My name is Ramela Irani.
Okay. You have three minutes.
Yes, good evening. In your invocation, you always tackle for the roof over your head, over our head. So there are some people that don't have roof over their heads. So, I mean, that's quite of irony. It's, well, that's put aside. Actually, in your housing element, still, I don't see how low-income people are going to benefit from this, since there are not sites available for low-income people, like building houses for low-income, for moderate people, moderate-income people. So I still don't see how low-income people are going to benefit from, since there's a fair housing requirement. Out of fair housing requirement includes low-income people, so that's still, is contradicts with the fair housing requirement. Well, with all said and been said, so I need you guys to take housing element seriously, since we're, since if we don't meet the deadline, I think we're going to lose those, we're going to have penalties and lose those grants for affordable housing grants. So please take it, take it seriously.
Thank you very much. And no callers? Okay.
Callers.
Okay, thank you. So let's see, any comments from my colleagues? Councilmember Satrian? Did you have comments?
I got clarification. You know, I was kind of conflicted on this item because I wasn't here when you guys went through the exercise. I think initially staff told me that we needed four votes, but it looks like you need three. I'm happy to support it just because I know that at least the four of you were present here in February, but I wasn't part of the discussion, and the only way that I could be part of that is to bring that up, and I don't want to do that to staff or anybody here, so.
Okay, I appreciate that. Any, any other comments?
No, I'll move.
Yeah.
Unless you're...
No, I, well, let me just say thank you to the team, Amanda, Kristin, and Bradley and everyone I know, and Eric. It's, this is complicated, and we were given some pretty significant numbers that we had to accommodate. I'm still, you know, a little surprised that we're able to come up with sites without any rezoning, and I guess we'll see as we go along, because they're going to keep holding us to our performance, right? And we do these annual performance reports, and I guess if sites are being developed at lower capacity than what we've said, then we have to make it up somewhere else, and I guess we'll see as we go whether we can, you know, whether we can accomplish it the way we think we're going to. But anyway, appreciate all the hard work, and yes, we do want a compliant housing element as soon as possible, so happy to take a motion.
I'll move the item.
Alternative one.
So alternative one.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
Mayor Protam Broadman, would you like to close the hearing?
Oh, yes, I will close the hearing. Now I need, I need to take the motion, the second again, once the hearing is closed, or am I good? Okay. Okay. Seems like such a formality, opening, close hearings, but that's, that's the way it is. Okay. We'll, we'll take roll call.
Councilmember Satrian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Kasakian?
Yes.
Okay, what's next?
The next item, Hearing B, is being postponed to the next meeting. Would you like me to read the item?
Yes, I think we do need to read it into the record.
Yes, you do, Mayor Protam, in order to continue it to a date certain, which would be December 13th.
Okay.
I'll read the item into the record. Hearing B, Community Development Regarding Revisions to Chapter 30.26 Advertising Signage Overlay Zone ASOZ Relating to Expanding and Further Defining the Number and Types of Signs Permitted in the ASOZ and Other Miscellaneous Text Amendments. Introduction of an Ordinance Approving a First Amendment to the 2020 Statutory Development Agreement with the Americana et Brand LLC in accordance with Glendale Municipal Code Chapter 30.26.100 for ASOZ Non-Assessory Signs and Sign Structures and Animated Signs and Sign Structures at the Americana et Brand. One, Introduction of Ordinance Amending Title 30. Two, Introduction of Ordinance Adopting a First Amendment to the 2020 Development Agreement with the Americana, Americana et Brand LLC. Our next item is Item C.
Just before we go to that, do we need to do anything? Do we need a vote to continue the item? Okay, so we're just continuing it to December 13th.
Yes, a date certain, December 13th.
Okay, thank you.
Hearing C, Public Works Regarding Resolution Ordering the Vacation of a Portion of the First Alley Easterly of Cedar Street Southerly of Broadway, Alley 502 for the Citrus Crossing Affordable Housing Project, Vacation Case Number 187V. One, Resolution Ordering the Vacation. Two, Resolution Adopting Plan Number 12-241.
Thank you. And we'll open the hearing and turn it over to Mr. Kalani.
Yes, thank you. Mayor Protam Broadman, Mayor City Council, Mr. Emroni, our Public Works Director, has been waiting patiently and anxiously to, to make this presentation, but he's going to make it quick.
Good evening. Thank you very much, Mayor Protam, members of City Council. This is a vacation of an alley to allow for the development of 126-unit affordable housing, and basically, the alley is going to be used as a passeo for improving the quality of life for the residents and the general public, and it's going to have landscaping, benches, bike racks, decorative lighting. So we are respectfully requesting the council to approve this vacation.
I'll move the item.
Do we, do we have any callers?
We do not have any callers on this item.
Okay. Any, any comments? No? Okay, I'll close the hearing. I remembered this time. We have a motion, we have a second. We'll take roll call.
Councilmember Satrian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Kasakian?
Mayor Protam Broadman?
Yes. Is that good enough?
And that was for both resolutions? The resolution ordering the vacation and the resolution adopting Plan Number 12-241?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes?
Yes, yes.
Okay, confirmation. And would you like to vote on this for the record? This is...
Say yes.
Yes. I'm surprised the report was so short.
Yeah. We were quick.
Yes, I will vote for that.
Okay. Okay.
Next item, Item 10, is Reports Information A Sanitary Sewer CCTV Assessment Project.
Okay, and are we going to take that?
Mayor Protam, members of City Council, in the interest of time, we would like to move that to future council meeting as well.
Okay. So we will look forward to hearing that report sometime after the holidays, I guess. Is that what we think? Or next week?
More than likely.
Okay, okay. All right, that brings us to oral communications.
Yes, oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to appropriate department for investigation and report. We have one speaker card.
Okay, we have Mr. Prieto back for the third time. This time, you have five minutes. You don't have to take it all, but you have up to five minutes.
All right, thank you again. So as I mentioned before, my name is Giuliano Prieto. I'm a civil engineering contractor, inventor, expert witness, and a consultant. I represent my family and my elderly parents that are here with me. What you're seeing here is a picture of our backyard in 2010, and this will be a picture of what it currently looks like now. I have, I've worked with the city for many years and have escalated the situation to the point where I have communicated with the city hundreds, literally hundreds of documented times from this summer, as I've escalated. Countless times in person, countless times by email, everything is documented. There seems to be no order in the city or no process for exercising justice in our situation. We have attempted to assist the city with about three to four inches of documentations, reports, and many of those reports being reports that the city has produced on liquefaction and hazard mitigation. We, first and foremost, wanted to receive exoneration for this situation, as our upper neighbor claimed that we somehow created this mudslide with a bobcat down below. As you can see, all the landscaping is in fantastic shape. There was no way to attain that. We've worked with many heads of departments, Miroslav Latsky, Bradley Calvert, we've worked with Michael Chong, countless inspectors. David Lightenberg helped guide us. John Tatalian helped us in sending us back to Mr. Bradley Calvert, and unfortunately, it only took 101 visits or more, along with emails, to receive this letter that we want corrected from the city. And before I read this, I want you guys to know that Mr. David Lightenberg has already exonerated us and said that our matter is closed, and if anybody wants to oppose that, that's fine, but I have it in documented email. The letter that I'm specifically here for, first and foremost, is a letter that I received from Arminay Hanunian, Community Development. And the second line after receiving this, because I wanted a letter from Community Development that said that we had nothing to do with this, she says, "All of the violations originally brought to your attention," meaning us, "in the notice noted above have been found to be corrected." And I want you to keep that word. "Thank you for making these required corrections." First of all, we, we didn't make any corrections. We didn't have any violations. We want that line in their closing letter to be updated. Something to the extent of, "Thank you so much for bringing this to our attention." We got it from here. "Thank you so much for all the documentation. Yes, you have no fault in this." Why do I have to go through all the rungs of the entire city to receive this? Besides that letter of correction, which I am kindly asking that the city council notice our frustration, we ask that we have third-party involvement. There's definitely something beyond what I can keep in this meeting happening in the Community Development Department. I have expressed these concerns, documented these concerns several times, from the city attorney to Community Development, to the city manager's office. There is no way that a situation as simple as this, where water is being stored, where there's no roof gutters, okay, going anywhere else, not one drain out to the street. It all is stored right here behind that wall. How anyone could possibly even think that it would be our fault to have this mudslide I'd like third-party involvement in this situation, not just to investigate this situation and that property, but I'd like fines and penalties to be assessed and neighborhood services to validate all valid complaints and exercise their authority that we have submitted to the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for me?
I have a question. So, we don't know the whole story. Are you in litigation with the uphill property?
So, we, we are currently in litigation, and that's why the truth is so important to have documented.
I get it. I mean, city misstating a condition may affect the litigation. So is that what's going on? You're in litigation, and you're trying to find out who's responsible?
They're claiming that we did something in 2014, but the city has already investigated that and knows without a doubt that we couldn't have done that.
All right, that makes, I mean, that's the whole package now, so I think...
Yeah. Does anybody else have any questions?
No, you can take a seat.
Thank you.
I just want to ask, maybe, ask Mr. Calvert, because this is the first, I'm hearing of it, and I'm looking around, it looks like none of us are aware of any of this, and it sounds like you probably are, so.
Yes, good evening.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Protem, and councilmembers. So, originally, a 72-hour notice was issued to both residents requesting information so that we could assess the condition and what may be the cause of this slide. Mr. Prieto actually provided most, but not all, the information that was requested. We did not hear back from the neighbor above. Mr. Prieto was first put in contact with me personally around November 9th. December 1st, we issued this letter stating that we were closed in this case. We looked at the information, we looked at what he provided us. Granted, it wasn't everything we requested, but it was enough to not keep the case open anymore. We had not heard from the uphill neighbor, upslope neighbor. We actually issued two citations to them as well, so there are two enforcement cases that are open for them. As acknowledged, there is a pending lawsuit here, and really, without, you know, a lot of technical studies, legal surveys, we cannot absolve him of all responsibility. What we've done is closed our citations. We do still reserve the right, if there was new information to be brought to light, that we could take an enforcement action, but that letter is a standard letter that we issue whenever we close an enforcement case. What he's looking for, what he's demanding from us, to change this letter, to exonerate, absolve him of all responsibility, we just cannot do. We've had this conversation with the city attorney's office, there's just not enough information that's there, and both Community Development and the city attorney's office believe it is inadvisable for us to find ourselves fully engaged in a civil matter.
Action.
I don't know if we're supposed to get into a whole discussion.
Well, I mean, my understanding from the gentleman that came up, he wasn't really asking for that, he was just asking, it looks like you guys use the standard form letter, and what he's asking is, if he hasn't made any corrections to anything for that letter, just because it's a form letter and states it's been corrected, he just wants it, whatever actually occurred to be included in the letter instead of it just being a form letter, so...
We actually have a number of communications requesting to be exonerated and absolve the responsibility, and that is why we do not want to take that position, because there's just not enough information for us to be able to do that.
Okay, so now we're going into discussion, so maybe we can take this after. Okay?
Okay, thank you.
We have one caller.
We have one caller? Okay, let's have, and who is that?
The caller is Gayane Pezeshkyan. Gayane, you're on air, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Broadman and councilmembers. I want to take this opportunity to thank Senator Porcantino and his staff for their efforts in SB 974, healthcare coverage for diagnostic imaging. Two years ago, I went for my mammogram and needed further testing. Sorry, I think I, there we go, okay. Sorry. Two years ago, I went for my mammogram and needed further testing, which required diagnostic imaging. This diagnostic imaging is not covered under the Affordable Care Act, therefore not covered as preventive care, even though it is pivotal in early detection of breast cancer. When I received the statement in the mail, I was very surprised, and after some research found that each state has to pass their own law to make this amendment. Texas was the only other state with this law. My own mother being the breast cancer survivor, and at the time, my best friend fighting for her life, I felt that this was an important issue to follow through with. I contacted Senator Porcantino through his email portal, and Representative Laura Friedman through her email portal. Mike passed, and one day I received an email from Senator Porcantino's office that they had received my email and were going to draft a bill. They included me in every aspect of this bill. I testified once in April in Sacramento, and once it passed the House, I returned to Sacramento in June to testify where it was also passed in the Senate. I never did hear from Representative Friedman about this matter, after I sent her that initial lengthy email with my stories about my mom and best friend, and texts from the Texas law that had passed. I must say, I was, to say the least, shocked when I heard she had also introduced the same imaging bill at the same time on the House side. I always did find this peculiar timing. Our bill, SB 974, that Senator Porcantino and his staff worked so hard for, did ultimately get vetoed by Governor Newsom, only days after my best friend passed away from her own battle with breast cancer. The outcome was not ideal, but I wanted to take this opportunity to thank Senator Porcantino for involving me, involving me in his own constituents in the process, which is so close to my heart. This came from an email, from an email to testifying in Sacramento, constituents have a voice with their elected officials. It was actually really interesting tonight to see councilmembers Satrian and Broadman give Malcolm Johnson credit for an idea in this, from this very platform, turning to the She Love Collective installation we have currently. We elect our representatives, but to know that we can make such an open dialogue, have such an open dialogue, and then be involved and credited in the process is an honor. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, no more callers, I take it?
Callers.
Okay, I think we have some new business.
We do.
I have an item of new business, Mr. Mayor Protem. I move that the city attorney is authorized to enter into a retainer agreement to utilize the legal services of McCune &amp; Harbor LLP, Dana McCune, to represent the city in the case of Tigran Topazikyan versus the city of Glendale et al., Los Angeles Superior Court case number 22STCV36445, and to incur all necessary expenses in connection therewith. The agreement shall, in addition to other provisions, contain a fee cap for the handling of said matter.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, and roll call, please.
Councilmembers Satrian?
Yes.
Devine?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Kasakian? Mayor Protem Broadman?
Yes. And now I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
And we are adjourned at 9:52 PM.
9:50.